Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. This is the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023. It is 6:05 PM, and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So with that, I would ask you to please rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. If I could ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
President.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Present.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
And Councilmember Clufus is absent.
Item D on our agenda this evening is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications or Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite the public to make public comments. So who would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Andy Bronco. I am a United States Army veteran who has been forced out of his home by an out-of-state investor who listed to a drug addiction and alcohol addiction rehab facility that is unsupervised, unstaffed, and is located in an SFR-3 single-family residence home and who illegally and in City of Palm Coast Code Ordinance violation is occupying that house. A regulatory action causing a code variance that arouses fear. Residents become nervous and unable to relax when they are thereby denied the enjoyment and use of their property for its intended purpose when the value of the property is diminished. That regulatory action or inaction constitute a taking of private property pursuant to the Taking Clause of the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution, the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, and the relevant Florida statutes, of which I have informed all of you previously. There are now six houses inclusive of 33 Pope Lane, according to Palm Coast Code Enforcement Manager, who sought guidance from the city attorney, who replied, "As you will know, there are places where more information is needed, depending on the location of the residents and zoning designation." There has been nothing done about this house. I am here today to demand just compensation for my property pursuant to the Taking Clause of the Fifth Amendment and the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and all relevant Florida statutes. Thank you.
Sir, we thank you for your service and thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Donna Stansel. I live in Seminole Woods area. We moved here from Missouri and specifically chose to live in Seminole Woods because of its beauty and of all of the single-family homes in the area. As you probably noticed, there is a-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but does this have to do with the agenda item later on the agenda regarding a development project?
Yes, indeed.
So I would ask you if you would hold your comments until we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Jeffrey Seib. My concerns tonight are about the City of Palm Coast Development Regulations involved with annexing Flagler County properties. One concern is why the city has to go through the elaborate, yet citizen-inhibiting procedure of a property rezone from Flagler County to Palm Coast Regulations. Flagler County Development Regulations should not apply to Palm Coast and vice versa. The requirement of a quasi-judicial hearing and ex parte public communication prohibitions have the effect of drastically reducing residents' ability to petition the City Council with their concerns on these matters. In addition, I don't see the reason planning department personnel that are describing the rezoning action be required to take an oath like they are testifying at a trial. It's unnecessary. If they are lying about anything to do with this, they should be fired. In the annexation of Flagler County properties, the planned unit development regulations in many instances have been in place for a period of time, years, 20 years or more. Because of this, they have lost their relevance to what is happening now. Palm Coast should not have anything to do with 20-year-old Flagler County Development Orders. After 10 years or less, these development regulations should be invalid. It was a different place in a different time, and we should not be held to something gathering dust on the books for that long. In this quasi-environment, residents get only one chance to voice their concerns to the City Council over these projects, and that is the first reading of the ordinance approving the rezoning at the council meeting, where these items are almost always placed at the end of the council agenda, requiring residents to hold on while other, mostly less important items are dealt with. The next time residents are allowed to speak out on these developments is the second reading of the ordinance, whereby then it's a done deal and nothing is going to change. I asked the City Council to alter this policy so that when another entity such as Flagler County Regulations are involved with a Palm Coast Development Order, the city should not invoke this public comment limiting feature of a quasi-judicial hearing so as to allow residents to speak freely on the features of any development order. After all, it's our city and our neighborhoods that are going to be affected.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir. Please, I'm going to ask everyone, please be respectful of the next speaker, so hold your applause so that we don't occupy the time of the next speaker. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm McDonald, Palm Coast. I'm going to ask a question, and I know I ask a lot of questions, but I really need an answer to this one. How much is a child's life worth? Well, Mayor Alvin and Councilman Hyder both know tragically how much a child's life was worth and still is worth. The reason I'm bringing this up is last night, my family had to bring my 14-month-old grandson to $163 million piece of garbage that you built in Palm Coast, does not have a pediatric center, does not have a pediatrician on staff. My grandson was experiencing difficulty with his breathing, a rash all over his body, and after three hours of waiting in the emergency room, a nurse came in and said, "Oh, we can't help you. We don't have pediatrics here." But yet, nobody said, "Why don't you get it? We'll get an ambulance and transport him to Advent Health in Daytona." No, nobody said that. So some doctor, and I use that term loosely, prescribed him the wrong medication. So this morning, the rash was twice as bad. So my daughter called her pediatrician, and they said, "Immediately, if not sooner, take him down to Advent Health in Daytona." So we had to go down there, and we had to experience another experience. Well, guess what we get told? The doctor gave him the wrong prescription. There was no excuse for having to wait three hours. There was nine children, nine, in the emergency room yesterday afternoon. Why? We build $165 million hospital. Didn't anybody think, "Hey, you know what? Not everybody comes out as an adult. We do raise children." Okay? So why don't we put something that can take care of a child? I mean, really, this is insane. So something has got to be done. I mean, I understand it's too late now, but the way we're building in the city, build in addition to that hospital and put a pediatric center so God forbid somebody's child is choking, somebody's child is having an allergic reaction, somebody's child gets hit by a car, falls down the stairs. At least we can maybe save the child's life. Damn.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good evening, City Council. Joe Runak, Seven Courtney Court in Palm Coast. At the last meeting, I just was very struck Mr. Seib's words last time we all met here regarding our Planning Board and Development Board. His comments rung true to me regarding the lack of information we receive from this board. Mr. Mayor, you just started a column in The Observer, Ask the Mayor. Love to read it, always do. I'd ask that possibly something from the Planning Board comes out in a weekly column so that the citizens here of Palm Coast are up to date on what they are looking at, what they are working on, Project 5249, Project 5237. It seems to me with this Planning Board, the citizens are not represented, the citizens do not get enough info, and all we see them is at the end, when it's already been decided. As far as Seminole Woods, I really felt for the woman whose house is going to be in shadow.
So that item is going to be addressed later in the agenda.
Okay. Understood, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I want to ask you again about my pet peeve, my project, the proposed cell tower at Seven Clubhouse Drive. Reiterate again, I don't even know how this project came as far along as it has. It's the wrong location. The land proposed for the use is not zoned for this cellphone tower. It needs an special exemption. Something needs a special exemption, and something's wrong as far as trying to cram this tower right in the middle of our section. I'm the C-section, our C-section. There's a retirement home. My house is less than 300 feet, which scares the heck out of me as far as putting up a permanent tower. As far as you look and see SpaceX sending up more satellites, more launches from year to year to year, and yet this tower goes up, it's going to be there permanently, and I don't think in any way, shape, or form it should be there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. This is just for rezoning in general. My name is Jessica Matthews, sorry. Res zoning in general, if a homeowner, say, wants to put a fence up or put a pool in, there is an extensive process that they have to go through, and it has to be drawn out, it has to have the correct measurements, there's a whole thing. Then it gets turned in, you have to apply for the permit. If it's not labeled properly, it gets kicked back. There's a whole thing that we as residents have to do. But when a developer wants to rezone something from, like, say, single-family to maybe multifamily, there is a slew of things that they could put on that property once it's rezoned. So when they're coming before you and they're saying, "We want this to be multifamily," unfortunately, it doesn't do the residents that live around there any good when it could be townhouses, it could be apartments, it could be duplexes. There's just too much, it's too broad. So I just would like you to really consider that when you're looking at rezoning, because if you rezone something, the intentions of that are what is told to the residents at the time. That could change down the road. So please take that into consideration when you're going further in any sort of rezoning throughout the entire city. Additionally, we have a lot of kids that live in Seminole Woods, and our park is really not well-maintained. It's more for, like, maybe three- and four-year-olds. There's nothing for the older kids to do. There's no soccer nets, there's nothing. My daughter can't use it. We really avoid it, and we have to drive all the way to the north end. We really have two beautiful parks on the north end. I was able to go to Holland Park the other day for a birthday party. It's gorgeous. There's no reason why we can't start transitioning some of that stuff into the other parks. So please, when you're doing plans, we attended the 2050 Comp Plan, we put recommendations in. When you're doing stuff that's going to be for the future for Palm Coast, please consider those things for the children. Again, we live less than a mile from the park, and we don't even use it. So these two parks on the north end are great. Please move that stuff down towards the other side. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sylvia Puglisi. I live in Palm Coast since 1991. Thank you for letting me speak. I totally agree with this lady that just spoke, also with Joe Ranak, because that location for that 5G tower is 150 feet from one of our homeowners association owner, and is a terrible location. We don't have a problem with the tower, but yes, with the location. Also, the PSP lots, which are public service parcels for the city, per the law, they're not supposed to have anything for profit. And these 5G towers are for profit for the city and for the contractor using the tower. That's against the law. That's against our charter, and we are not supposed to have PSP towers. Already, the city put several of those towers in PSP lots, and if they try one more, maybe we're going to have to look into that, too. So it's not fair when we are asking you, please, don't do that. One more reason why I'm speaking today is this. That Wawa in Florida Park Drive, crowded Florida Park Drive and Palm Coast Parkway that was so hard lobbied by the city community development officer, it looks like it's going up. So if the city decide to ruin our lives with a Wawa in the middle of Palm Coast Parkway on very crowded traffic, Florida Park Drive, then the city needs to provide us with those stop signs promised by our good mayor, that we are going to suppose to have three of them for traffic calming reasons, and also the two traffic calming islands. You have almost the obligation to revive that because you spent $163,000 in 2020 of our hard-earned taxes on the engineering study, on the Lassiter Traffic Study for the two calming traffic islands on Florida Park Drive. And now with the incoming of this Wawa, which will add 200 vehicles per hour to the already 9,000 vehicles per day that are in Florida Park Drive, we need those islands. It's almost an obligation. If you're getting any impact fees from the Wawa, that I would like you, please, all you inform me of that, then you use those impact fees for those two islands, because you took our funds away from the two islands last year to put them for the Seminole 1.7 million repaving that actually we residents think and we saw was not necessary. So please do the right things for us. No more rezoning, no more special exemptions to the zoning, no more spot zoning, please. This is what is ruining our city. So we beg you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Steep car Palm Coast. Not long after the city installed turn lanes off of Palm Coast Parkway and Palm Harbor Parkway onto Florida Park Drive, Florida Park Drive almost has turned into a parkway in itself. It's a residential street, but it's being treated as a parkway. FDOT 2022 Traffic Count said there were 7,700 cars per day, 765 trucks per day. That, if you multiply it out for a whole year, it's over 3 million cars and trucks per day coming through a residential neighborhood where there are children that have their bedrooms on the front of their homes, and all the traffic fumes and traffic noise is horrendous. Not long after that, we had a truck ordinance done for Florida Park Drive, but it's not being enforced. So since it hadn't been enforced, the heavy trucks come through, crushes the pipes, got to dig them up, replare, have to repair the wares, got many potholes, much damage to the street. Well, how can we say we got a $52 million shortage on infrastructure funds when we're allowing heavy trucks to destroy the residential neighborhoods? Does that make a lot of sense? You're saying, taxpayer, you've got a shortage in infrastructure funds, but we're going to allow more destruction to the roads. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, anyway. So the residents need some help on Florida Park Drive. The stop signs, the islands, the traffic calming islands are definitely needed. And the residents of Florida Park Drive have spoken since 2013 about the horrific traffic noise and all that's happening on Florida Park Drive. So how are we being rewarded? We're given a Wawa, so we have 200 more cars to deal with. That's the way we look at it. It sounds like, well, the city hasn't heard you, so they're going to punish you some more. And that's the way we feel. I'm sorry, but that's the way we feel. But so if you will do it to one residential neighborhood in Palm Coast, you'll do it to some other ones, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me in City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm DeRobles. I live at 27 Albright Court in Seminole Woods.
So-
Good evening.
If I may ask, is this about the Seminole Woods project that we're talking about later in the agenda?
No, sir.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So following up with the gentleman, because I had noticed with all the building of the homes going on in our neighborhood, that we are getting, like, semis and dump trucks full coming into the cul-de-sac, and they don't realize that there's no outlet. So is there any way that Palm Coast can visit that in order to put, like, a signage on a stop sign as you're coming in that there's no outlet, so we can reduce all this traffic? Because these huge trucks are going into private driveways, okay? And they're heavy, and they're damaging the property, and we can't do nothing about it. Okay? I'm just letting you know. The other thing is that I have here is, I've been noticing she shuds, he shuds, whatever you call them, okay? And they're bigger than 10 by 10. The lots are not that big in Palm Coast. And then they're getting put to the back of the line, boundary line, measured, but then you're seeing people adding, like, an air conditioner, so it's, like, protruding even more so over. And it doesn't look right because the roofs are angled so much that the angle is, when it's raining, it's flooding the other neighbors. So do we want to visit that and see how big these she shuds, he shuds, and how they're going to impact the other neighbors? Because we're already getting flooded enough just with the rain. We don't need- And then the other thing is, what about the insurance of those he/she shuds if they go on fire? Who's responsible for those? Are the owners going to put that on their insurance? So then if something happens, the other neighbors are all protected? That's just my question. Okay? Here, I have another follow-up, and it's to do with, a couple meetings ago, I was up here, and I was kind of concerned about two things, but I'm only going to talk about one thing right now. And I'm only bringing it up because there was a fire last week, and it was to do with debris, right? And we all know it here. We all read that. Okay? So on 27 Albright, it talked about the debris that's facing the condenser, and I haven't seen anyone over there. I got a little email saying it's closed, and everything's rectified, but it's still the debris. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir. All right, let's pay the speaker respect, please.
No respect. I have a complaint.
Please introduce yourself for us.
James Johnson, E.S. Section. There's a problem with flooding, especially when you go from Sesame to the orbit to the other side of Sesame, where the drainage, I call them canals, that come underneath the Sesame Road, they're all dammed up. You've got swimming pools, you've got debris from branches and stuff. They should be cleaned out. And the other one, this being my last one because I'm very fast, the Seminole Woods lighting system that you built from racetrack all the way to Highway 1, wonder how they are going to work 100%? Half of them are off. One night, the one's on, the next night's off. The ones from Sesame to Highway 1 seem to work fine. From Sesame out to the racetrack, it's a joke. So I mean, how much money do we pay for this, and why don't they work? That's all I can say.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker, please? See? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Mara Worth. I live in the Birchwood area. I'm here tonight to try to, I guess, get some answers and hopefully some action from you guys. I am trying to fight the construction. A house is being built next to my house and another person's, and it's way, way up. It's, like, three and a half feet higher than it needs to be. And we've called the city, we got the runaround, we actually have Mr. Danko involved because we just didn't know who to turn to and what to do. So we've contacted the necessary- So we've contacted the necessary people that should be making a decision, and they just let the construction to go on. And so we just don't know how to, you know, move forward from this. I actually brought a visual aid just to show you guys how ridiculously high it is. And Mr. Danko himself has been there a few times. Channel 6 has been there, Palm Coast Observer has been there. And so we have, you know, because we couldn't get anybody in the city to help us, so we thought we had to just proceed another way. So I would like to ask this council and you, sir, Mr. Mayor, you know, we pay our taxes, and we hope that you guys would take care of us, take care of our needs, look out for our interest. This is not looking out for our interest. We tried to stop it, they just didn't want to listen. They didn't care. They did not care. They admitted it was too high. I mean, they built up the sand up this high, this high, and then built the house on top of the sand this high. And what happens when the rain comes? Who's going to pay for all the damages? Nobody. The homeowners. And I was telling Lynn Stevens, please, stop it before it becomes a huge problem. No, we can't do anything. We're finding out that there's a huge lack of regulation in this city as far as new construction is concerned, and we hope that you will address that because there's so much building in the city. And we appreciate that. It gives us jobs, it boosts our economy. We're not against that, but we need more regulation and enforcement. That's what our city needs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Would you like this?
Please, you can give that to the clerk if you would. Thank you. Very good. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
First and foremost, thank you to our veterans. It's a...
Sir, please, address me. Thank you.
Thank you to our veterans, first and foremost, for their service, every one of them that's here.
Sir. I'd just like to read... Sir, excuse me. Can you just state your name for the record?
Daniel Seaman.
Thank you.
I'm just going to read some parts of a Florida statute and also a RESPA law, just because some of the things that are happening around the city, I think maybe there need to be some public reminders. Florida State Statute 112.3143 deals with voting conflicts. It specifically talks about, and I'm paraphrasing, "The, a state or public officer," this is not paraphrasing, "a state or public officer may not vote on any matter that an officer knows would inure to his or her special private gain or loss." And that is Section 2, subsection A. And then Florida State Statute 112.311, I'm going to read paragraph 1 in its entirety. "It is essential to the proper conduct and operation of government that public official be independent and impartial, and that public office not be used for private gain other than the remuneration provided by law. The public interest, therefore, requires that the law protect against any conflict of interest and establish standards for the conduct of elected officials," you guys and gals, "and government employees in situation where conflicts may exist." And there's also a RESPA law, and most of you are real estate people, so I'm going to just refresh your memory, RESPA law 1024.14, which deals with kickbacks.
Please, please, don't...
Hold on, I haven't even got to the meat yet.
Respect the speaker, please.
RESPA 1024.14 deals with kickbacks, and that relates to kickbacks now and in the future. The RESPA law, which is enforced in this fashion, if you receive a kickback in the past or in the future, you can be taken to court. You will be required to pay three times the amount you were paid, all of the court costs, and it can include one year of jail time per each occurrence. And until later, that's all my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
And was kind of touched on a minute ago, but want to make sure that, reiterate to you, Mr. Mayor, the new building on vacant lots. We've done a lot of building over the years, waterfront and so forth in different areas, and have seen this in other cities and now experiencing it here in Palm Coast. We have vacant lots that have been sitting. It's great to see people are buying those and building on them. But when the builders are coming in now, they're building those houses two, three feet above the surrounding houses. In questioning that, what happens is there's not a proper drain grading going on, which is going to long-term effect flood the houses on both sides of this new property. I get it, a lot of the insurance companies are saying, hey, build it higher is better, but they're also not looking at the surrounding houses. The drainage issues changes the natural flow of water. You know, there are studies on how that natural flow is and goes. When we build up, it changes that natural flow, potentially causing those flooding issues to the neighbors. Brought this up to the building department, and an inspection was done on a particular property, and the answer was, well, the silt barriers are in place. Well, the silt barriers have nothing to do with the long-term effect. So it's a huge concern that, you know, now while the foundation is being poured, once that's done, it's very hard in a lot of cases. You know, you can change the grading a little bit, but you're still interrupting the natural flow of water. So definitely, you know, I think that that's something going forward that really needs to be looked at and studied hard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining speakers that would like to make public comment to me at this time?
My name's Toni Michael, 7 Whitehorse Lane. And I came up last time, and I told you about the new build next to me, and you says, you know, write my name down. They did call me, but I was out of town, and I haven't got time to, I haven't had time to get back to them. Now, the question is, now that I have a swamp for a backyard, and no, I can't afford $10,000 for a drain field or whatever to put in at my expense, I have two empty lots behind my house. They're up for sale. When my house, when those houses go up and the ground is three feet above mine, as it is now, I've never flooded there. I've been there almost 20 years. The water comes up to my lanai, okay, my concrete patio I put there. My house will have water running through it when they build those two homes that are going to be put up. Now, that's going to diminish my property, so my property value is going down already because of the house next door. So I expect the city then to lower my property taxes because I'm not going to be able to sell my house. It is now in a flood zone, which was never in a flood zone. I mean, this is ridiculous what the city is allowing these new builders to build these houses. And Ed came out when they were first building. I called up St. John's Water Management. I called up the city. The city sent out an inspector. The builders chased them off, cussed them out. And I looked at him, and I go, are you insane? Why are you letting him talk to you that way? Oh, there's nothing we can do. So somebody's doing something that the city workers can't even do something. All right? I pulled a straight line. It was two and a half feet, all right? That property next to mine. They did the slab totally wrong. You're supposed to do the air conditioning slab separate from the building slab. It was all one slab. Palm Coast inspectors come out. Oh, looks good to me. I know the builder. And they walk away. All right? And another question here. I had a property in Fruitland Park. I just sold it two months ago, all right? My water bill and trash pickup was $64. Waste management, they supplied my cans, they picked them up with a truck, and if I left, you know, like say I went out there for a month and I call them up, well, I'm not going to be there for another six months. They turned the water off for me. Don't charge me. They just stopped the service, stopped the trash pickup, the water service. I don't get billed. And now I hear our water bill's going up another $6. Where's this money going to? If you charge us $100 for water, and the city of Fruitland Park only has to charge $64, and I have bills to show it, same waste management, same kind of water, what are yous doing with our money? That's all I like to know.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers that want to address me at City Council at this time?
Good evening, Mayor Alvin and everybody else here. My name is Candace Stevens, and I live in District Number 2. I have something in common with everyone here. I live in Palm Coast, and my home and yard is flooding due to overdevelopment. There has been no forethought put into the existing people living in Palm Coast when you're building these homes next to us. When I moved into my home seven years ago, I moved in during Hurricane Irma. I literally was closing the garage door as the hurricane hit, my first night in my new home. I woke up in the morning not knowing what to expect, and I had no flooding in my yard, thank God. Two years later, they built a new build behind me. The next hurricane hit, I had two feet of water in my backyard. A year later, another home was built next to me in the other vacant lot. Now my yard floods almost all the way up to my home. My son's bedroom was damaged last time. Now I have to have flood insurance as well. I want to know how anybody with a right mind that's not an engineer cannot see that when you're building the houses higher to us existing people, how the water is not going to sit in our yards. How is that possible? Don't you all have homes like we do? Everybody in this room has a home. I bet you it's everybody's in this room's largest investment. It is mine. Now what do I do? I have to put drainage in my yard. I wouldn't have been able to get an FHA loan if my yard was in a flood zone, if my home was prone to flooding. How is that fair to do that to the existing people that live here? I moved here and bought my dream home, didn't everybody else?
Please.
How many other people are having flooding in their yard?
Ma'am, please, address your comments to me.
You have to fix this. Sir, I want you to look at me and not get the glazed look on your face because this is my home. This is where I live with my son. I go there after I work so I can have solace and peace. I can't have that now when I know it's going to rain for two or three days even because my yard floods now then too. So I want you to give us a suggestion and an answer on how you are going to address this and how you're going to fix this because it's not fair to put it on us. Some people in here are on a fixed income. They can't afford an $8, $10,000 bill to have their yard tringed out, right? I wouldn't have bought my home if I knew I was going to have to do that. They tore part of my fence down when they were developing the yard behind me and next to me. I had to put a fence in. Seriously, I'm a single parent. We elected you, and we trust our government to take care of us and put our best interests at heart. I'm not about not people moving here. I'm all about development, but you have to take care of us that live here. And I don't want to just get a yes. I want to hear something that's going to happen. Ed, we talked about it yesterday. I want an action plan, and I want to hear what it's going to be because I have 108 people that I know of that are on my side.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Greetings, Mayor, members of the council. So the common theme here tonight across all boards, all districts, everything, seems to be an issue with the overdevelopment and the rezoning and the arrogance of the council to sit here and discredit the members and make statements basically saying like, you know, it's less of the statements that are being made and more of the point that like issue after issue after issue is consistently brought up to the dais in front of you guys, and nothing is done. Yet we're focusing on the westward expansion. We're focusing on all the apartments that are being built. We're focusing on all the clearing of the new subdivisions. When do the people that have been here that have invested 20 years in the community get their fair share of the taxes that are put in? When do we get our representation? You know, part of me wants to be really, really, really cynical about it and say like, look, we need the new growth, we need this, we need that. But at some point in the day, it just looks like we're doing benefits to the people that aren't members of the community yet instead of the people that have built their lives here, established their homes. My comments are directly to you and to no one else.
Thank you for your comment. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everyone else. My name's Marilyn Mack. I've lived here for almost 10 years. And same thing, I had the vacant lot next to me cleared last year. I contacted them because they're the construction company, which was, I can't think of it right Their excavator tore everything down and came across my property line six to eight feet, causing holes. They tore up two pine trees, half their root systems. They still have never repaired it. It's been 14 months. And my question to the council is, who's representing us? Who's representing us? Our tax dollars? Who's representing us as residents? Because I contacted the city, I contacted the contractor, and they all just lied to me. They kept saying, oh, yeah, they have to fix it because this is the damage they've done. 14 months later, they still have not fixed it, and they already gave the certificate of occupancy for that house. And the lot is a foot higher than mine. So it's the same issue. And I don't understand how this is happening because I've been here this long, and this only started about a year ago where the lots are being built up so high. Just a little bit of information on me. I have a background in government, which is local, state, quasi, and federal, so I'm very familiar with law and contract law. Something's not right here. This is not how the government is supposed to work. The inspector came out and gave them their certificate of occupancy, knowing that my property looked like that. That's not right. That's not how the government is supposed to work. You're supposed to work for us. Our tax dollars pay your salaries. And, you know, just like everybody else that came up here, I'm very upset about it. This is my home, my biggest investment. And I'm a disabled person, and now my lot is not level. It's unsafe for me. It's got holes in it, for God's sake. They pulled out all the pine trees and everything. They didn't come and ask me anything. They came across my property line and did all that. And everybody that works for the city in whatever departments, construction and everything else, just turned a blind eye and, well, no problem. We'll just, she'll have to deal with it. I don't need this on my plate. I've got enough going on. And I've been dealing with it for, again, 14 months, and nothing has happened. So I ask you, please, to address this issue, and please don't let it happen to anybody else. It's not right, you know? And I do see that it's partly some of the certain contractors here because there's two lots across the corner from me, and they were built at the same time, or a little bit earlier, but they occupied this past March. No problem. Land's flat, even with everybody around him, no hills, no nothing, no water problems. Oh, and also the swell in this lot is so flat to the side of my driveway, it floods my swell, and it also floods into the road now. It never did that for 10 years. So I just ask you again, please, to address these issues.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at
Good evening, everybody. I'm Joy Cook. I live in Seminole Woods. It has nothing to do with that. May, I just want to address something that I find very concerning.
Ma'am, could you pull the microphone down?
Oh, I apologize. Is that better? I listen to the local radio station here, WNZF, and I listen to the Free For All and the Real Estate Matters. I think you really need to be careful what these people are saying on there because I know it is a freedom of speech, but they're sitting here giving us the impression that Palm Coast is going to flood, that you are going westward because you believe that the beach is going to go up to the railroad tracks over by Montezos Woods. So I know, your eyes are rolling, and mine are too. But it was on a, it was certain parties, David Avis, Jeff Douglas, Brian McMillan was there, Toby Toblin was there, and I might be missing... McMillan was there, Toby Toblin was there, and I might be missing one or two. But these people are talking about the development of going on in Palm Coast and stuff. But they're giving me the impression that you are under the assumption of going west because you believe the east is going to be flooded. And I just want you to know, that's the impression the public is getting. And I think that's something you may need to address with them as well, sir. Okay. Because I think that's why a lot of people are very upset here because and feeling like you're being ignored. They could be listening to this stuff going out as well. And I think that's something you really seriously need to address. Okay?
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers? Yes, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Renee Newton, and I live on Slipper Orchid Trail West. So I just wanted to report that my case with the stormwater department has still not been addressed since the beginning of June. They were supposed to be in the S section in September. And I'm with everybody else. They put a new build right beside me. And their swells are higher and their drains are higher than my drain. So now, the last time I measured it, when it rained, my swell is now 21 foot wide on the side and in the front of me. So it just keeps backing up more and more and more. I don't know what it's going to take to get the swell authority people out. And I know the one lady said they already sent an inspector when they do a new build. And I'm not sure how the inspector inspects these swells because it's very visual that their drain is higher than my drain. And there's only three houses till that water goes into the runoff that they build. So if they would send out an excavator or whatever, it would only take them an hour, an hour at most, to make that swell take the water in the direction that it should. And again, it's only three properties. Okay?
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else want to address me, our City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public, yes, sir. Come on up.
For the record, my name is Tom Pietro. I live in Island Estates, in Island Estates, on Island State Parkway. I got the same issue with flooding. My house is a $3 million house. I have a million dollar house, went next door. I have a nine-car garage. I have water coming through my garage walls. That's how high it's getting. This house was put in, it's four and a half feet higher than mine. I'm 10 foot from the property line. So is the other house. It's 20 foot. They put in this property and built the soil up so high that it's collapsed seven times. It closed in the swell that went all the way back to the intercoastal, which is my backyard. Instead of the water following its way back into the intercoastal, it comes to my property and comes through my walls, goes around my house and engulfs the house like a moat. The city has been out, the county has been out. I just want to know who's given this authority. I know they increased the flood planes for the new house builds. This is what I've been told. We have had attorneys out. I have come after the city. They sent a lady out from the county who said, no, this is right. You need to dig up your lawn in order to get rid of the water. Well, the problem is, is the water comes off the street and now invades my house. Just like the lady before me had said, their drainage that's supposed to hold their water on their property is higher than mine. Now, anyone with a glass and a straw knows what that does. It comes over and invades my house. And I'm with the rest of these people in here that I want to know what is going to be done with this. I've been dealing with this for a year and a half. They said they, nothing will be done until the build is complete. They're a year out still. Alls I'm doing is taking these bills, taking this kind of money that's out here. I'm already up to $60,000 worth of damage. I got nine show cars in my garage that somebody's going to own very soon, not me. I want to know when this is going to be addressed for these people, not only me, but everyone else in this room that is allowing to be these these new constructions to be done. And no one's doing a damn thing about it. Nothing. So I'm going to leave my name on a card. I expect somebody to get back with me and these people over here.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? So seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And I would ask each speaker to make sure that they leave their name and address with our communications director. Make sure she has that so that we can follow up with each one of you because we will get back to each and every homeowner or resident that spoke this evening. So with that said, I would ask City Council if there are any particular comments that you want to make now.
I do have a couple of questions. I've been out to Birchwood Drive and I saw the construction that's going on out there. And I met with the local residents. And it looks pretty strange to me. I mean, it's three feet, three and a half feet above the neighboring lots. But I did bring it to the attention of our city manager. And I'd like to know, Ms. Bevan, if you have any updates for us or if staff has any updates for us on what's going on out there. Because I don't know anything about building, obviously. I'm not an engineer. I don't build homes. But when I looked at that property, I was pretty alarmed. So I'd like to know where we're at with this, if you could.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yes, you did elevate it to my attention. And I do appreciate that. Our top leadership in stormwater engineering has taken the lead on working with the builder and the neighboring property owners. And I would just ask Carl Cody, we've gotten some results of some recent field investigation, and he may be able to share some of that to your question, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. Yes, we've been working with the property owner adjacent to this build as well as across the street. We've spoken to a couple of residents on that roadway. We have gotten permission from them to do some survey work. We found that I think from one property owner, we're like 1.09 feet above them, and the other one, we're like 1.24 feet above them.
Wait, wait, wait. You're saying they're dirt-
Floor, finished floor slab elevations are just over a foot.
All right. So Carl, just so you know, again, I'm not an engineer, but I went out there and I stood on that property. And I'm not a tall guy. There's a six-foot fence there. I could see well over that fence.
We're just, we're just talking about the slab right now. So, yeah.
Well, the slab, yes, the slab. That bound the dirt. I'm just curious, where's that water going to go? How are we going to deal with that water?
Okay. So we'll just go through the process. So when a permit comes in, the city has guidelines, Land Development Code, Technical Manual that goes through-
Do we have a retention, stormwater retention regulation at all?
It's a grading plan, stormwater grading plan. It falls within our manual. We've actually had a grading seminar with the builders, the surveyors, right here in this room a couple of years back. We've got a video so they can go back and watch it. We walked through-
My question, just so I understand, our goal is that water from one property should not run into another and flood another property, correct?
Correct. When the city started reviewing permits on homes, the way the drainage works, it has to flow from the back to the front. So there's two options along the property line. It can be either a V-swell or a W-swell. It depends what was constructed on those adjacent properties, how they deal with that. Now, when the, so there's certain requirements they have to meet with the grading of the property per the building code. Once you get to so many feet away from it, the building codes got some regulations on slopes. Then once it gets beyond that, then the city has regulations in our Technical Manual, Land Development Code that talks about the flow to the swell and then what the soil grading has to be to the front. And we have minimum slopes, like, you know, that those swells can be. So it can't be, you know, a super steep, has to be maintainable. So we review the grading plans when they come in, when the builder submits. And we verify based on the information that they give, that their surveyor has drawn up, that's signed and sealed, that yes, they got the flow line shown. They got, they meet the criteria of our code where it drains from back to front. What we typically find in a lot of homes are those existing properties, when they're permitted, you know, a long time ago, before the city, sometimes they grade it on to those vacant properties. So-
Those adjoining properties, adjoining properties. Do you know when they were built?
One was built in 2001, and I think it was permitted through the county. And then the other one was more recent. I think it's a 2015 home.
2015.
I believe.
In the city.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and double check that. But I think it's a more recent home. So we review that. You know, right now, those lots are just rough graded. You know, they're going to be fine graded. Those swells are going to get cut in. You know, all that fine grading is going to be done later on in the process. Right now, they just get the fill dirt in. They dump a bunch of fill on the site so they can build the slab. And then they move the dirt around and they, they work on the final grading later stage in the, in the project. But yeah, based on our swell work, has it drained back to front.
Okay. So where's that water going to go on each side of those houses? Because that's a lot of, there's a lot of dirt there. I mean-
So, so, okay.
I just want to make sure we all understand this.
So Vice Mayor Danko, let me, let me suggest this. So there were a dozen speakers that were talking about a dozen different properties.
Right. And I had no idea.
Wait, wait, wait. So each one, from an engineering standpoint, is going to be, have some particular measurements and grades and everything else. So let me suggest this. And with your help, if we work with stormwater and Mr. Cody, why don't we review each one of those properties that each speaker spoke about today? Because I think you're, you're asking about a generality which is not going to apply to every single property. However, what is important, and I think what the city should know, is if there is the potential for flooding on any of these properties, we need to look at the engineering and be sure. So if you're willing to work with stormwater to look at each one of those properties-
I'm trying to get an education on this because I'm not a builder.
Exactly. Exactly.
I've been out to that property and I'm just like, I'm kind of blown away with what I-
So would that satisfy, and I'll work-
I just want to ask Carl a couple more questions.
Sure.
That home on Birchwood, you would be okay living next to that?
So-
I mean, it's okay with, you're assured. No, no, no. Both, both, please, please. I mean, you would be-
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. Hold on. Excuse me. I'm going to ask the audience to be silent now, Vice Mayor. That question is out of order.
I think it's a legitimate question. I mean, honestly, if I was living next to it, I would have concerns. What I'm really asking Carl is can he assure us, can he, can stormwater assure us that that water will drain and not flood the neighbors at the end of the day?
So Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. Excuse me. Okay. Now, I will ask you, I will, I will ask you to quiet down or I will recess the room. Okay. Now, Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask you, if you would like to go into that detail, I would ask you to go through City Manager to stormwater and ask that question so that you can understand and see the engineering detail behind that question.
Well, and that's what I'm, I'm asking Carl is, can we be assured that when that construction's done, that water's going to flow to the swell and not into the neighbor's yard? I think it's a pretty fair question.
If you will go through the permitting with him and look at all the work done, then you can, he can answer the question specifically and in detail.
I'll be happy to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cody. Any other comments at this time?
Vice Mayor, you done?
All right, I'm done. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So there's a, is my mic on? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a couple of things with regards to the flooding and the building on the info lots. When Birchwood was brought to my attention, I also discussed the matter with City Manager. And yeah, I don't know. Can everybody hear me? Is that better? No? Okay. Well, maybe we can get this technically fixed in the meantime, but I don't want to hold up the meeting. So this seems to be a more robust issue to me. And there are, there were maybe a dozen people here that spoke on this issue, but I've seen it repeatedly throughout the city for many years. And so, and we don't have, we still have thousands of info lots that this can potentially still happen on. So I have asked City Manager to work with staff to readdress our land development code and our technical manual to address this on a larger scale so that we can not only fix what's going on now, but also look to the future. And I've asked for deliverables from city staff in the form of updates. What are we doing to look at our LDC? What are we doing to look at our technical manual? Because from my understanding, a lot of the properties that are being built are next to properties that have settled a little bit. When we live in Florida, the flood plain changes just because of natural, we're in Florida, we live in a swamp. So this matter for the edification of our public is being looked at from a technical standpoint on what we can do in our LDC to fix it now and in the future. I will be personally responsible to people who email me and ask me for an update because I have asked City Manager to keep me updated on what our staff is doing to address this on a larger scale. For those who are here tonight and for those who are having these issues, I would like to echo and appreciate the mayor's comment that please reach out to us personally so that we can send staff out. And I would also ask staff to look at the gentleman who came up at the end, Tom Pietro, for properties that are in the midst of being built, let's see what we can do while these properties are being built to mitigate the damage that could be occurring to neighboring properties in the meantime, so that we're not just quote unquote waiting until the end. Is there some type of temporary structure that these builders or developers can put in place to mitigate what's going on? Because yes, we have requirements. And yes, if they meet the requirements, there's only so much that we can do. But we can also engage in mitigation factors or make the builders and the developers engage in mitigation factors. So I would, I think it's incumbent upon staff to maybe look at this because it is an issue in our city. And I commend those people who are coming up and speaking about it. The other thing I wanted to bring up is there was a comment, and I just would ask City Manager to provide an update. Give me one second. I'm sorry. I took a lot of notes. Oh, for the Planning and Development Board. I know this has been an issue that's been brought up previously. City Manager, if you could provide information on where people can get agendas and things like that that are before the Planning and Development Board so that people can keep track of those hearings.
Yes, thank you, council members. So just like our City Council agenda, we provide the agendas for not only the Planning, Land Development, and Regulation Board, but our other committees like the Beautification, Environmental Advisory Committee. Those are all available online. And also, I like to share a tool that's available as well to the public. It's a map facing viewer that you can actually see where a development has applied to the city of Palm Coast as an application, and then also the status of it. Any member of the public can see that. We update it routinely. Just visit our GIS site and you will see multiple viewers, not only from a development potential, but also what we're doing in our infrastructure improvement. So we have over 118 CIP projects happening right now. And that means we're working on your infrastructure. We're making improvements. And you can see that also through a map viewer and have that at your fingertips at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my final comment is just regarding the Pope Lane property. I do know, even though you may not have received an update, I will make sure that the gentleman who came and spoke on that gets one because we are working on that. So even if you haven't received an update, please know that it is, we actually discussed it yesterday. So it is being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make, I'd just like to make one quick comment. And thank you to everyone that mentioned about the properties being built up higher than normal here in the city. Well, this was brought to my attention probably about a year or so, maybe a little bit over a year ago, by a constituent that lived in the F section. She had just purchased her home there. And they were building a home next door. And she called me and she said, Kathy, the home that they're building next door to me is a, she said, they can actually look into my backyard over my fence. That's how high it was. So I understand your concerns. And I think that this is a matter that we do need to look more closely at because evidently, not only my constituent that had these situation going on, but there are several in the community. So I feel that we need to take a much closer look at it.
Thank you. And I would urge you again, the public comment is for intake for us. I would please ask you- I would please ask you to simply fill out the comment card. If you could put your name and your contact and just a very, very brief description so that we can, City Manager and City Council, respond and follow up on each of your issues. We are concerned about those, but this is the process that will work the best because you each have an individual property that probably will need a different solution. So I would ask you, please, to fill out those cards so that we know who to get back to. And we are listening, and we will engage, and we will use city staff to try to remedy the situation. So thank you. With that, I'll close public comment for this evening, and I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is section number E, the minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of City Council from October the 17th, 2023, a business meeting. The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve a second by Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll similarly ask for a motion for the meeting of October the 24th, 2023, a special workshop meeting.
Make that motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve. May I have a second? I have a second from City, from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. With that, we will move on to the proclamation section of the agenda.
Excellent. Mayor, Members of Council, and Brittany, thank you for setting this up. Good evening. My name is Casey Ryan. I'm a local resident and also a very proud resident, or proud citizen of the United States of America. I love veterans, and here I am surrounded by veterans here that joined me tonight. We work for Halifax Health Continuing Care and glad to be here tonight to honor veterans and to, to thank you for all that you do in allowing us to honor them. Tonight, joining me is a staff member, Eric, who's Operations Manager. And we have Mike, Dick, Bob, and Jeff, who are veteran volunteers. And again, all of these gentlemen are volunteer, are all veterans. And we are very happy to present this to you, but I think, Mayor, you have something to.
So let me start off. Now, I read this proclamation directly to you, but of course, it would be for every veteran. So please take it in that light. Whereas tonight's City Council meeting is the ideal venue to pay tribute to our local military men and women who have sacrificed their own lives to ensure the remarkable quality of life that we share here in Palm Coast. And whereas every single military veteran who lives in the city of Palm Coast and/or is employed by the city deserves meaningful recognition for the selfless service that they have shown to our homeland. And whereas those city of Palm Coast employees who are also United States veterans have had two different service careers, first in the military and then serving our government in civilian life, making them unique individuals who deserve our distinct appreciation. And whereas we are indebted to all of these extraordinary men and women who have done things most people do not want to do, conquered places we would never want to visit, and lived at length in uncomfortable surroundings that we cannot even imagine. And whereas Palm Coast and all government entities in Flagler County will be partnering to honor the hundreds of local military veterans who have safeguarded our freedom through a countywide Veterans Day parade ceremony and picnic, our freedom through a countywide Veterans Day parade ceremony and picnic lunch on November the 11th to commemorate their distinguished service to our nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that November the 23rd be officially designated as Veteran Appreciation Month. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Veterans, we handed out a special gift. If we missed you, please let us know as we finish our picture here. Thank you very much. And on behalf of us, red, white, and blue veterans, we are here to honor you. And not just today, not tomorrow, not just this weekend for Veterans Day, but throughout the year, let's give honor to those that represented us and some paid the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
Our next proclamation this evening is the Lung Cancer Awareness Month. I'm sure I don't need to tell members of the audience. I know I've suffered through this in my own family. I know many of you have as well. What's that? Lung cancer, we're doing. Mm-hmm. Hold on, just.
We missed the agenda?
Yeah, no, no, hold on, it's coming, it's coming. All right. Hold on. Okay. Whereas lung cancer is the, is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and Florida, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas screenings for lung cancer for high-risk individuals can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trails far behind funding for research of many other cancers, and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer. And whereas African Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races, and disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well characterized among African Americans and other racial minorities. And whereas 10% to 20% of those diagnosed with lung cancer have never smoked, and the proportion of lung cancers diagnosed in people who never smoked is increasing in the U.S. And whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer among individuals who never smoked and the second leading cause of lung cancer overall. And whereas organizations working in Florida, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that November 2023 be officially designated as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And I share that I lost my own mother and was her caregiver for quite some time. So I appreciate and understand what these organizations are trying to do. May I offer you a word?
Just would like to say thank you very much on behalf of everyone that's gone through that situation and has dealt with cancer, and especially also for those that support those who have gone through that and the ones that have gone with them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hyder will deliver our next two proclamations.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to be delivering the proclamation for Shirley Chisholm. So if the group would like to come up and stand with me. It's good. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here. I'd just like to mention that being able to present this proclamation for Shirley Chisholm brings back a lot of memories for me because I remember, I was in seventh grade when it came across the news, and I was sitting in my Guidance Council's office, and they announced that we had just elected our first African-American Congresswoman, Shirley Chisholm, into Congress. And I know that me standing here today is a part of the work that she has done because she's paved the way for us as African-American women and all women. So I am very honored to present this proclamation. Whereas Shirley Chisholm, November 30th, 1923, through January 1st, 2005, was a humanitarian, humanitarian politician and achieved a dynamic list of firsts. She was a trendsetter before her time. And whereas Chisholm's legacy focused on the equal rights of women, children, family, and education. And whereas Chisholm made history for being the first black United States Congresswoman and making a bid for US, for the US presidency in 1972. She was an advocate for minority education and employment opportunity, opportunities during her term in Congress. And whereas Chisholm was bold in taking diverse, taking a diverse approach as a politician. Shirley Chisholm stood firm in what she believed in. As a gifted leader, she brought awareness by being purposeful, a purposeful voice which extended to the black community. And whereas Shirley Chisholm Trail, the Trail along Pine Lakes Parkway, was dedicated to Chisholm's legacy on November 30th, 2022. It serves as a tribute to her trailblazing spirit, advocacy and equality, and her profound impact on the community. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that November 2023 be officially designated as Shirley Chisholm Month to remember Shirley Chisholm and reflect upon all her accomplishments in life and contributions to our nation and remember her as a catalyst for change in America. Signed the 7th day of, 7th day of November, 2023, Kari Cook, City Clerk, and our Honorable Mayor David Alvin. Thank you. And Agnes White would like to say a few words. Thank you so much. All of us here and many others who could not make it this evening are very proud of this opportunity because Shirley Chisholm lived here and enjoyed our community. So in keeping that in mind, this year, we're going to have a luncheon on November the 30th at the Pine Lakes Golf Course to honor Shirley Chisholm's birthday and also to see the new trail markers that will be placed along the road. Please join us.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
This second proclamation will be to encourage residents of Palm Coast to be local and buy local. Are there any representatives here from that group? Excuse me?
If you have, if you have a local business or you're representing a local business, you can come up for this one.
Whereas the city of Palm Coast, Florida, is focused on encouraging residents to be local, buy local, where we promote small business, local businesses, and the contributions they make to our economy and the community. And whereas our community receives a portion of three different sales taxes when we purchase goods and services locally. Last year, the amount of sales tax returned to the city amounted to over $10 million, up from $8.2 million in 2020. And whereas this money helps pay for important community projects, such as the Community Center and Holland Park. It also pays for street improvements, sidewalks, and more. And whereas if every resident of Palm Coast spends $25 at a local business on any given day, it would infuse $1.462 million annually into our local economy. And whereas on November 26th, as the holiday shopping season kicks off into high gear, Small Business Saturday will be celebrated by many who are dedicated to supporting small businesses. And whereas founded by American Express in 2010, this day is celebrated each year on Saturday after Thanksgiving. Since it started in 2010, consumers have reported spending and estimated $103 billion across a Small Business Saturdays combined, across all Small Business Saturdays combined. 2022 marks the 13th annual Small Business Saturday. And whereas the US Small Business Administration, most recent figures show there are currently 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99%, 99.9% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 64% of new jobs created in the U.S. jobs created in the US. Now therefore it be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that November 2023 be officially designated as Be Local, Buy Local Month. Signed the 7th day of November 2023, Kayla Cook, City Clerk, and the Honorable David Alvin, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. As a small business owner, I appreciate the city's marketing department in helping us promote our businesses. So watch out for that Be Local, Buy Local guide that they're putting out. Thanks.
Councilwoman Pontieri will deliver the final two proclamations.
The folks that came up earlier for the diabetes proclamation. Come on, now it's your turn. You were right, though, it was first. Sure, may I read the proclamation and then it's all yours? No, you want it first?
Yes, my name is Tony Papandrea. I'm chairman of the Advent Health Foundation. And I'd like to address what Mr. McDonald said earlier about his child. I am heartbroken to hear what he said. I sent our executive director, John Subers, to speak with him directly after he left. I want to assure you that his concerns will be addressed and we will take care of it. And because we care.
Thank you for that. And I believe you. Whereas the American Diabetes Association estimates that nearly 37.3 million people in the United States are afflicted with or affected by diabetes, and another 88 million are still at risk for developing prediabetes. And whereas having diabetes elevates the risk of heart disease, amputation, kidney failure, and blindness, causing serious hardship for families across not only our country, but also our state and nation, our county, I apologize, but also our state and nation. And whereas diabetes screenings and self-management education will help individuals in the recognition of the symptoms of diabetes and provides an opportunity to follow suggestions for living a quality lifestyle. And whereas the International Diabetes Federation has established November 14th, 2023, as World Diabetes Day to educate citizens on ways to predict if someone is at risk for the disease, to help recognize the symptoms of diabetes, and to follow suggestions for living a quality lifestyle while they endure the affliction. And whereas the city of Palm Coast and Advent Health Palm Coast together recognize that the growing number of diabetics in our community make a strong case for devoting more resources to helping to find a cure, provide screenings, education, and support in the required lifestyle changes. And whereas Advent Health Palm Coast has formed the Diabetes Alliance. This alliance represents city of Palm Coast, Flagler County Health Department, Flagler County Free Clinic, and many corporate and private citizens that are all dedicated to beating diabetes. And whereas the alliance will kick off November diabetes awareness efforts in Palm Coast by flying the alliance flag and hosting educational and screening events throughout Flagler County to continue efforts to raise awareness and educate our community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Palm Coast that November 14th, 2023 is World Diabetes Day and November 2023 is Diabetes Awareness Month. And Palm Coast to increase community awareness of the risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes in order to improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will seek medical attention to avoid the devastating compilations of the disease. Signed the 7th day of November 2023, attested by our, tested to by our clerk, Kayla Cook, and signed by the city of Palm Coast Mayor, David Alvin.
Well, as I said, my name is Tony Papandrea and I'm the chairman of Palm Coast Advent Health Foundation. And six years ago, we couldn't have said what I'm going to say tonight. The Diabetes Alliance has allowed the health department, the free clinic, Advent Health, local community, people, and businesses to get together. And as a result, there are 300 people out there who no longer have to prick their finger to check their diabetes because we have monitors now. There are 150 people out there who get their insulin for free. We have a now, now have a designated diabetes nurse navigator who gives a class every week at the free clinic. Forty people a week attend there. Y'all look at each other. And I can tell you that there are many of you out there who are prediabetic, some of you already have diabetes. Type 2 diabetes can be cured. And the work we do helps that along. This is Mel, and Mel is from, Mel is from the health department, and she has something to say.
So hello, my name is Melody Pierre-Jean. I work at the Florida Department of Health in Flagler County. I'm a registered dietitian and the program coordinator for the Diabetes Self-Management Education Program. So preventing diabetes-related problems is this year's National Diabetes Month topic. Diabetes can damage the eyes, as we have heard, the kidneys, nerves, heart, and it's linked to some types of cancer. Approximately 1 in 10 Americans, or 37.3 million, suffer from diabetes. And for prediabetes, it's 1 in 3. Diabetes with its far-reaching impact demands our attention and action. I'd like to emphasize how crucial diabetes self-management education programs are to preventing diabetes-related problems. These programs provide a wealth of information, equipping individuals with diabetes with the tools they need to control their health. They empower us to understand our bodies, manage our conditions, and make informed decisions that lead to healthier, more fulfilling lives. Moreover, the diabetes classes play a pivotal role in managing the condition and mitigating potential complication. It's alarming that only 4% of Medicare participants newly diagnosed with diabetes attend a diabetes self-management education course. The information learned in these classes can be pivotal in preventing diabetes complications. The classes teach participants how to properly monitor their blood sugar levels, learn about their medications, modify their diets, engage in regular exercise, and reduce the risk for other health problems. For those who bear the weight of diabetes, attending these programs is not just an option, it's a lifeline. It is a step towards a future where complications are minimized, blood sugar levels are managed effectively. I implore those living with diabetes to embrace the opportunity that these education programs offer. Your active participant is not only a gift to yourself, but also a gift to your loved ones, your community, and to a healthier, brighter future. Let us work together as a community to foster a culture of proactive health management. Let us ensure that diabetes self-management education programs are accessible to all who need them because it is through education and empowerment that we will manage the condition effectively. If you have diabetes, please consider attending a class with me at the Florida Department of Health, or at Advent Health, or at the Flagler Free Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Perfect. Ready? One, two, three.
Do we have anybody here for the communication proclamation? Patrick, you're not shy. Get on up here. Come on. Whereas effective communication between government and residents is essential for building trust, ensuring public safety, and fostering transparency in crisis situations, as well as in day-to-day governance. And whereas the evolving landscape of communication technologies and channels requires governments to adapt and enhance their communication strategies to meet the diverse and evolving needs of the residents. And whereas World Communication Week serves as a global celebration of the power of effective communication and fostering unity, bridging divides, and advancing human progress. And whereas open and inclusive communication between governments and residents plays a pivotal role in addressing community concerns, disseminating vital information, and encouraging civic participation. And whereas this week offer, offers an opportune moment for governments and residents to acknowledge the critical role of effective communication in strengthening collaboration, promoting accountability, and enhancing the quality of life in our communities. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city of Palm Coast that the week of November 1st, 2023 be officially designated as World Communication Week and urge all residents, businesses, civic groups, government agencies, and other organizations to use this week to reflect on the significance of transparent and responsive communication in both times of crisis and in daily governance. Let us reaffirm our commitment to fostering effective two-way communication, building trust, and strengthening the bonds that unite our communities. Signed the 7th day of November 2023, attested to by Kayla Cook and signed by our, our mayor, David Alvin. So I do want to give the mic over to anybody who would like to speak, but I have to commend our staff, our emergency management team, our fire department, the city of Palm Coast Fire Department, and the county, and our sheriff's office for the emergency management that they do, especially during this last storm. We really, really came together as a city and a county as well. Our partners over at the county did a great job. I mean, really, it takes a total team effort to do what these guys do. And so I really want to commend our staff and everything that they've done. So.
I'm Brittany. I'm the communications director at the city. And we have a really great team. We, we try to push out as much information as we can all the time. And we are always welcoming your feedback. If you want to give us better ways to reach you, we would love to hear them. And one great way for you to reach us is to get involved with our Imagine 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update. So everything that you want to see in the future of Palm Coast, you can let us know through that process. And it's really easy to find on our website. And we actually have a short video to show you now.
Today, we celebrate World Communications Week, a time to acknowledge the incredible work each of our Palm Coast communications teams do daily.
Our communications team at City Hall, Parks and Recreation, and the Palm Coast Fire Department are the backbone of our city communication efforts. They ensure that our messages are clear, our residents are informed, and our community is engaged.
World Communications Week is a great time to recognize our talented communications professionals and the work they do to connect with our residents. They believe we can make Palm Coast even better through resident engagement and truly be a city on the rise.
But communication isn't a one-way street. Your voice matters. The Palm Coast Comprehensive Plan is an opportunity for you to shape the future. By participating, you can directly influence the development of our city in the future years to come.
Thank you for being a part of our vibrant community. Together, we can shape the future of Palm Coast and continue to build the city we all dream of. Learn how to get involved and connect with your city by visiting palmcoast.gov/imagine2050 today.
I want to, I want to thank the Citizens Academy for their patience and endurance, not only to make it through the academy, but through the meeting thus far this evening. So you are, you are all to be commended. So you get our very best. You get Brittany and Denise, our city manager, this evening.
So our Citizens Academy is one of my favorite things that we get to do two times a year. And we get to kind of show a behind, behind-the-scenes look at what our city does from every department, every administration. They even got to sit up there and be city council. And we did a mock council meeting on their second session. So that was really fun. But we're going to graduate them tonight. It is the 54th session of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy, which is pretty phenomenal. So as I call your name, if you'll come up, get your certificate from Ms. Bevan, and then just kind of circle around the front, we'll get a group picture. Daniel? Nope. Linda? Joe? Oh, sorry, I just had him to you. Carol? Christopher? Oh, it's high and everything. Rebecca? Karen? Kenneth? Oh, we got two Kennedys. Both Kennedys? Okay. Samantha? It was two Kennedys. Steven? Grayson? And there are more, but we don't have them for some reason. Well, we're not going to wait. Could come up, please? We will get them to you. I know they were printed. All right, we're going to make two lines so that we can get all of you guys in the picture. There you go, that works. Yeah, I need you. Come over here. Linda. I can't see you. Come stand next to Denise. Please, thank you. All right, I can see everyone. Ready? One, two, three. Okay, I'm so sorry about the certificates, but they'll be here in a minute. Congratulations. Does anybody want to say anything? Do you want to say anything? You look like you want to say something. No? Okay. All right, thank you. Yes, she ran upstairs. They're up there. I don't know what happened. They just didn't all make it down here. Do you want to?
On behalf of the 54th graduating class of the Citizens Academy, I would like to thank the city of Palm Coast, particularly all the venues that we were able to see firsthand, not only observing the facilities, but operations. And I want to tell you, they are staffed by some of the most wonderful, diligent, experienced, and educated people that I have met in my three-quarters of a century on this earth. Thank you, everyone who participated. Thank you.
54. Definitely recommend it. It's just something very interesting. You'll learn about how the city works from the inside. Thank you.
Congratulations, and I hope that you will all consider yourselves ambassadors and champions of the future, and I know that you will all be participating in our comprehensive plan and the future for the vision, so we'll count on that. So thank you. With that, I'm going to ask my fellow city council members for consensus. Councilman Clufus is absent this evening. I would like to push forward the appointments for vice mayor and also for council liaison appointments until we're all in attendance. Is that okay with everyone here?
Not really. He's not here, and that's his choice. He's missed a lot of meetings, and the rest of us have not missed any meetings. I've missed one because of COVID. You missed one because of health. I don't think we can delay something just because somebody keeps missing meetings.
So, and how do you feel?
I kind of agree with Vice Mayor Danko.
Councilman Potieri.
I don't really have a preference either way. I think that we could probably garner consensus without his presence. I feel like there's nothing that would kind of upset the apple cart, so to speak, in that regard.
So I guess my question to each of you is, if we're going to appoint Councilman Clufus to any of the particular liaisons of which he currently holds, how can we do that in his absence?
Well, I think if he can come the next meeting and not accept the appointment, we can readdress it then.
Okay. Council, do you have some advice?
Yeah, I would just point out, you know, these are liaison duties for the city council, so really, I mean, the ability to attend a meeting on a certain date when they're held and agree to the appointment is important, and I don't know that we have that information with Councilmember Clufus. So, I mean, you're ready, you can proceed if you like, obviously. I just think, you know, it may require more time in the future if an appointment's made that Councilmember Clufus can't, you know, can't get to or attend because maybe he has another conflict. So that's the only thing that I would point out.
We can work that out later on.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, then we'll move forward. Will the clerk take us forward then?
Absolutely, Mayor. So the first for council's consideration is to elect a new, or I'm sorry, to appoint a new vice mayor for 2023 and 2024.
Restate it.
Is this better? Can you guys hear me? Okay. So, Mayor, the first item for consideration is to appoint the next vice mayor for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Okay, so I would look for a motion.
I'd like to keep Vice Mayor Danko.
So is there a second?
Well, I'll be happy to second it.
So, any other discussion? Then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Next item?
Mayor and city council, the next item for consideration is the council liaison appointments. It is completely up to council's discretion if you would like to.
So I'm going to, you each have your own liaison appointments. Is there anyone that would like to change their current liaison appointment?
I'm good with mine.
Vice mayor?
I would.
Councilwoman?
No, I'm satisfied with mine.
Well, I have a conflict with the SMA board, because each time that the SMA board is scheduled to meet, we have our 6 o'clock council meeting. Their meetings are at 5:30. So it's a huge conflict for me.
Understood. So we'll remove you from that liaison position. Is there anyone that would have interest in attending the, how often are the meetings?
They're once a month. But they usually fall always on the same day as our 6 o'clock.
Do I have anyone interested in being our liaison to the SMA group?
Well, Mayor, then presumably all of us would have that same conflict. I'm not really sure how that's cured.
Well, I mean, you can go to SMA and get the minutes and liaison report back. I'm not sure you have to attend in person. There's no requirement to attend the meetings in person. If not, then we'll leave that one blank for a moment.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If we can't attend a meeting because of this conflict, would we be better off having the city manager appoint someone on staff to attend?
No. But the liaison can follow up with the organization for the minutes of what was discussed. That would be appropriate for this council. Okay, what's next? So are there any, yes, I'm sorry, there is one new city council liaison, and I would volunteer to accept that role and attend the meetings of the newly created FC3, which is the New Arts and Culture Foundation. So is there anyone else that would have an objection to that?
No.
Okay, so you have that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And we also need to consider appointing to the Family Life Center.
I would like to take that.
So when is that? Let's make sure there's no conflict.
Already checked it.
When is it?
Sorry, I'm just trying to take a look here, Mayor. It looks like they meet once a month on the third Thursday at 10:00 a.m.
That works for you. Very good. And everyone is good with that?
Yes.
Very good. That'll be your appointment. So thank you very much for volunteering. Very good. Are there any other appointments that need attended at this time?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to Section H on the agenda, which would be ordinances of the second read. Counselor, if you would read in number H11 for me, please.
Of course, Mayor. This is an ordinance concerning the Cascade's Comprehensive Plan Amendment, application number 5109, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as previously amended, pursuant to Section 163 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation for approximately 330.8 acres of certain real property from residential low-density rural estate and conservation Flagler County designations to residential and conservation city of Palm Coast designation. As described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, and adding a note on the future land use map to limit certain subject area to be called the Cascade's planning area, 375 acres, to a maximum development of 850 dwelling units, providing for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date. City council, as you know, this is a comp plan amendment. Comp plans and amendments are legislative matters, and you will be considering this matter pursuant to the standards outlined in the Comprehensive Plan for amendments to the future land use map.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council Ray Tiner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This item was heard in September 19th for the first read. It went to the state for their review, and now is back in Mr. Jose Pappa. We'll have the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Jose Pappa for the Community Development Department. I'll have a brief summary of the item that was presented to you previously, and I will cover the first part of these two applications. And the first part would be the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for this property. Just in review, we have a 375-acre parcel, 330 acres of which was subject to a map change due to its annexation into the city. Forty-five acres that we call the hook piece was previously annexed into the city and will not be subject to a map change at this time, since it already has the city designation of residential. So the proposed map amendment here would be from the Flagler County designation of residential low-density and conservation to city designation of residential and conservation with a policy to limit the development to a maximum of 850 dwelling units, and that shows you the property. So again, just in review, during first reading, which was on September 19, 2023, it was this item, the proposed amendment was approved. It was transmitted to the different state agencies for review. That includes the Department of Economic Opportunity, the Water Management District, the Department of Transportation, the Department of State, Flagler County, and we received no comments from those various state agencies and no objections. So again, here with this proposed amendment, we know that the public infrastructure is available. Consistent with our Comprehensive Plan, the major wetland areas will be designated as conservation. That's about another 67 acres. Within that 357 acres that we previously discussed, the proposed designations are consistent with the surrounding land uses, and again, the applicant's proposing to put a site-specific policy to limit that development to 850 units. This was reviewed by the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, and they found this application to be number 5109, to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and recommended that city council approve the flume amendment from residential low-density rural estate and conservation, those are Flagler County designations, to residential and conservation, which are city of Palm Coast designations, along with a site-specific policy to limit development on the area to 850 dwelling units. And I believe the applicant is also here to answer any questions you might have on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Councilmember, councilmembers, vice mayor, questions?
I have no questions this time.
Councilwoman, excuse me. Please.
We're asking for questions from staff. Public comment will come after the applicant comes up and gives their presentation, and then public comment will occur.
So my questions are for the applicant. I know, I think as of this afternoon, there was a letter sent to staff and city council with regards to some of the extra steps the developer was willing to take to alleviate some of the resident concerns. I don't know if that, if those have been officially made a part of what we would be passing here today, because if not, then I would propose that they be added, so that if this property is sold after today's approval, the buyer is also bound to those same requirements. So that is one of my questions to staff and to the applicant.
Can the applicant, Mike?
Good evening. Michael Schmenter for the applicant. We don't have a presentation since nothing's changed since then, but I'm here to answer your questions, concerns, and respond to the public comments. So your question again, Ms. Potieri, is the letter that I sent, would those be acceptable to place as policies in the Comprehensive Plan?
Well, yeah, I mean, whatever's going to bind whomever the developer or the builder of this, I guess the developer of this actual property is going to be, because oftentimes these approvals are acquired from city council, and then the property is sold, the development is sold. So I want to make sure that even if your client is willing to take certain steps to alleviate resident concerns, that those same requirements are also binding on any future successor and interest.
We are more than happy to make those binding on successors and assigns as it relates to municipal law and how you need to go about doing that. We're more than happy to accommodate it, but yes, whatever form, function, document that you need to assure those, we're willing to stand by them and make them binding on successors and assigns.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's the only question I have for the applicant. I do have some questions for staff, though. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Hayer?
I would just have one quick question. I know that we've been made aware of what the different changes are going to be, but have the community at hand that, have they been made aware of what changes are being made to the plan?
So last night, we had a second neighborhood meeting. It was about an hour and a half. We took down their questions and concerns this afternoon, or at that meeting, they provided me with their email addresses, those who attended, and the letter that you received today from us making those commitments were shared by email to those people in attendance. So the entire community, obviously not, but those who attended the neighborhood meetings, yes.
Mayor, I just want to clear, I'm sorry, I just want to clear something, too. You know, the letter that was sent is probably more applicable to the zoning ordinance that would be the next item rather than the comp plan. So I just want to remind that, you know, this is the comp plan amendment, and then the rezoning with the multifamily gets into more details of the uses. So the letter that was sent to city council is probably more applicable for the next item.
And I understand and appreciate that, but, you know, I didn't appreciate the difference between those two things until I was sitting in the seat, so presumably the public doesn't understand either. So I would suggest that those go ahead and be listed. I've asked that that letter become a part of today's public record so that they can be incorporated in the case that this does pass, and I would ask that we go ahead and list those so that before public comment occurs, all of the people that are here today to speak know what those other concessions from the developer are.
Understood.
I do have a couple of questions for staff. May I ask those, Mayor? Did you have any questions, Vice Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I was reading in the actual proposed Cascades, the proposed ordinance, it references in Exhibit A and B, and I don't see those attached, and it also references in Exhibit 1A, but I don't see that either. So what are those?
The attachments to the ordinance typically would be a legal description, meets and bounds description, and the second part would be an exhibit showing the map as it would appear after, if you were to approve the ordinance. Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure why they're not attached.
Well, we have them. They're just labeled differently, so I want to make sure we're under the same understanding. Okay. And then for Exhibit 1B, I know that in Exhibit A, which is a legal description, we have asked, or it's, we're limiting the amount of dwelling units to 850. Can we just add that to Exhibit B to make it very clear?
Yes, ma'am. Certainly we can.
Great. I had a question with regards to the population increase. Is it just code that we estimate there will be 2.4 persons added per dwelling unit?
Yes, because that's really in our Comprehensive Plan and probably based on when we updated in 2010, you know, what an average household size would be, and I believe that would be a blend between a single family and a multifamily unit, because when we're talking about the Comprehensive Plan level, we're stating dwelling units. We don't know if it's single family or multifamily. So we take the blend of the two households per units between a single family and a multifamily, and that 2.4 represents an average. But so certainly, as we update, as we're going through the process now of updating the Comprehensive Plan, that number might change. Now, if I'll just, I might be going too far here, but if someone wants to say, oh, I want my policy to be, I want a site-specific policy that these would be single-family dwelling units, then likely the persons per household, we would more likely use the persons per household for a single-family dwelling unit in terms of our analysis.
So my concern is that the transportation study that appears to be done, which is on page 95 of our packet, says that transportation study was based on single-family residential during PM peak hours, peak hour trips. The problem is, we know that a lot of this development is proposed to be multifamily. So my concern is, one, was the traffic study that was actually done accurate in accounting for both multifamily and single-family, and two, in what you just described as kind of a hybrid between single-family and multifamily, how is it that we, I guess, correlated the two and reconciled the difference between what a single-family increase of population would be versus a multifamily?
Well, I could tell you what, that in terms of traffic generation, a single-family dwelling unit produces more traffic than.
The problem is, we know that a lot of this development is proposed to be multifamily. So my concern is, one, was the traffic study that was actually done accurate in accounting for both multifamily and single-family, and two, in what you just described as kind of a hybrid between single-family and multifamily, how is it that we, I guess, correlated the two and reconciled the difference between what a single-family increase of population would be versus a multifamily?
Well, I could tell you what, that in terms of traffic generation, a single-family dwelling unit produces more traffic than multifamily. So, and, and, and these are based on the Institute of Traffic Engineer study, studies. These are the numbers that we use for every application, because they are accepted by, by the planning profession and by the engineering profession. And so, when, when we use the single-family traffic generation, we are actually taking the worst-case scenario for a traffic generation for a dwelling unit.
Okay, and then when we're looking at the strain on resources, because per our own staff's findings, this, and I mean, we're more than doubling the dwelling units, right? We're going from four hundred sixteen, which was approved by the county, to eight hundred and fifty. So obviously, that's going to have a larger strain on infrastructure, water, emergency services, all of the things that our taxpayers pay for. So what have, what have these other strains been based on? Have they been based on single-family or multifamily or both?
They were based on single-family. Yes, ma'am. We took the worst case.
And there's also a reference to an estimated increase in demand of ninety-two student stations based on this. How is that come up with?
We use the school district's student generation rate, and they do have a different student generation rate for single-family, multifamily, and mobile homes. And in this case, also, again, we use the worst-case scenario of a single-family dwelling unit.
And you referenced, and this is maybe something more robust, you referenced earlier traffic engineering studies and acceptance in the profession. When is the last time we've looked at whether or not that's up-to-date and accurate?
We're using, was it the twelfth edition? Yeah. Yeah. So ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, produces a traffic engineering studies, and every so often, every few years, they will update those based on additional studies or whatever else. I'm not a traffic engineer, but so those are the, sort of the, the point of reference that you will use for, for traffic generation. And so we, we use that one, I don't like to use the term bible for anything other than, for what it's supposed to be used for, but that reference, I believe it's the twelfth edition, is the most up-to-date volume of what ITE produces for traffic generation.
Okay.
Excuse me. You'll have your chance for public comment. Let the City Council finish their questions, so let's stay orderly so we can get through this properly. Go ahead.
And the twelfth edition, we might as well address the comments we hear. What, when was that updated?
Yes, and it's, I believe it, let me take that back. What I see here is that it's the eleventh edition, and I don't have the date on that. I'd have to go back to the.
Okay. The, on page ninety-seven of the packet, it references groundwater resource protection, and it says, according to city-maintained data, the subject property contains three known well sites. Will the city maintain the ability to use these well sites if it's necessary in the future?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's somewhere in the ordinance, or is that in the code? I'll just see where, what's the reliance on that?
We have a groundwater protection ordinance that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I missed it.
I'm sorry. We do have, we do have regulations in our land development code that protects those wells from any inconsistent use that might affect the groundwater that's being pulled from those wells.
Okay, and then my last question is, one of the standards that we have to look at is whether or not this, this proposed property will be compatible with surrounding properties. And I see in several locations in the packet, the surrounding future land use map designations. To the north, we have residential, which is a City of Palm Coast designation. To the south, we have residential, City of Palm Coast designation. To the east is agricultural and timberlands, which is Flagler County designation, and to the west is conservation. Are any of the north or south that you've referenced here multifamily, or are they all single-family?
I believe that they're all multi, single, I'm sorry, single-family. But again, we're talking about the comprehensive plan designation here.
I understand that. They're inextricably intertwined, and I won't have these types of questions during this. But again, a lot of this is because public comment is coming, and presumably all of public comment will come with regards to, there's no difference in the minds of normal people, including myself. So how is it that the city is determining that this, with the inclusion of multifamily, is still compatible, knowing that we've got to the east and west agriculture and timberlands and conservation, and to the north and south only single-family?
This is, our residential designation is the only residential designation that we have in terms of the comprehensive plan. We have no other residential designation. We have mixed use, which permits residential uses, but I believe in this case, it probably would not be appropriate. It would be inconsistent with what's to the north and to the south being designated as residential. And, you know, even to the west, where you might have, I believe that's Flagler County Preservation, probably not, not the most compatible, but again, it would, if that was, if that was the application placed in front of me, I would have analyzed it for that. But I think, again, we have the designation of residential in the comprehensive plan. That's the only one. It's the same as the designation that's north of us and that's south of us.
Okay, so we don't have a low, medium, or high residential density, right?
No, ma'am, we don't.
So then when we look to that, when we look to the zoning, the rezoning that we're about to address in a moment, that's where we would look at for the surrounding areas, MFR one versus SFR one, correct, to look at compatibility?
Yes, ma'am.
So then I'm going to jump ahead to that, because again, this will come up.
Councilwoman, if my understanding is from council that we're handling these two issues separately. Council, do you want to weigh in?
I understand that, Mayor, but if I may respond, and I understand, and you're correct.
Yes.
But again, our, our, our public is about to comment on this very issue, so I think that it would benefit everybody for them, for them to hear from staff as to what their assessment is with regards to how they think single-family residential is compatible with the multifamily.
But I wouldn't want you to be confusing the public by combining these two issues with what you're doing.
They don't vote, Mayor. We vote. So I think, I have faith in our, in our council to know the difference between the two and what they can consider. I think that it would benefit the residents to hear from staff, because there will, there is no dichotomy of these two issues in the public eye.
And they'll have a chance to listen to staff when we get to the next item.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
So what is your, what is your point again?
My, my question is, how is SFR one to the north and south compatible with, with the multifamily in the zoning? How, how was that?
Which was asked and answered.
No, it wasn't.
Do you want to repeat the answer again?
I'm not at the point of addressing the zoning issues that have come. I think we have a presentation from Mr. Hoover that will cover the zoning request, and I believe if that's the question that's being posed, maybe it's better that we.
So if we, if you'd like to wait on Mr. Hoover to comment on that, that's fine. I just thought it would benefit the public to hear it now, but I understand the position.
But if I was, I'm sorry.
Mr. Popeye, I don't, you've done a good job explaining exactly what you're here for, and I appreciate that, so I have no further questions for Mr. Popeye to sign.
Mayor, I just want to confirm the IT manual, the latest, the edition eleven there was, that's the latest edition, it was done in September twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Ray.
It's the latest.
Councilwoman Haier, any comment?
No comment.
Very good. So now I will open up this issue for public comment.
I started earlier, but here we go again. My name is Donna Stansel. I live in Seminole Woods. We moved here from Missouri and specifically chose to live in Seminole Woods because of the beauty and all of the other single-family homes in the area. As you probably notice, the room full of people behind me is a pretty good-sized crowd tonight, most of whom oppose rezoning our area to build apartments, townhomes, or even more housing, because we've got so much going on already. The only people who seem to be in favor of this are the members of the developers, the lawyers, and some of the members of our council here. It has come to our attention that many of you favor rezoning our neighborhoods for this new development. We know that at least two of you are going to be vacating your positions to run for other offices. You should not vote to do what the residents do not want and leave others behind to deal with this. Two rhetorical questions, things that you, that we want to know, who is, what is in it for all of you? I know that the gentlemen to my right are fully invested financially in this development plan, but that doesn't mean that the residents are. And why are, why are you going against your constituents? My proposal is that we not just put this out to a planning and development group, we should put this out to the residents and let us vote on it.
Thank you for your comment. Now, I'm going to continue public participation, but you're going to have to respect each speaker's right at the podium, so please. Now, may I have the next speaker, please?
I'm Richie Marr. I'm a resident of Seminole Woods. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. However, if I can start with a quick gratitude thing, I did bring my two sons here, very young, so they could see how civil discourse occurs, and I'd like to thank each of you for allowing them to see that, specifically you, Mayor. You showed them how a public servant should not act. This is ridiculous. I understand the decorum, however, your lack of emotional maturity and the way you beat the gavel earlier was a poor example for my children. Beyond that, the statistics you're using for traffic and for the increase in people is a nationwide statistic, not a statistic from the City of Palm Coast. It is common sense that a multifamily home is going to have multiple families, AKA more children, more vehicles. All I ask is that we use common sense. It's been admitted tonight that we have no control over what happens when we build a single-family home next to a single-family home when it comes to water. How are we going to figure out what's going to happen with eight hundred and fifty homes? All I ask is that we use common sense. As a fellow public servant of fifteen years, I ask you to be professional public servants and do the right thing. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker. Is there a next speaker, please? Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I maybe provide a point of clarification? So when we talk about the trip generation, it's per unit. So it's per each one single-family residence, and if it's a multifamily, let's say it's an apartment, per one apartment. The reason why single-family is used is because typically, single-family homes are larger than apartments and multifamily homes. So that would, that's why there's more, and it's on the higher side because of the typical size, and I'm talking in generalities, because of the typical size and the units, because you can fit more people in a single-family home typically than you can in an apartment. So that's why that is the item that's used. It's done on a per-unit basis, not, and it's counted for each unit. It's not all this big group of units, it's for each unit that counts done.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Brian Budka. I'm a resident of Seminole Woods. Regarding the zoning, there's many issues that we need to consider that are important, but there's one issue that's truly life or death, and that's emergency services response times. I echo the blunt warning of Battalion Chief Barry Hill, and I quote, "When we get eight minutes to arrive on someone who needs CPR, there's virtually no chance of them having a successful outcome." Unquote. Eight minutes are death. That's the stark reality that we face when we're talking about statistics of emergency services response times. The Palm Coast Fire Department strives to achieve a response time of seven minutes throughout all of the Palm Coast. However, the department's own analysis of Seminole Woods has painted a very concerning picture in twenty-nineteen. It found out that four out of five Seminole Wood districts experienced average arrival times exceeding the seven-minute goal. Even worse, sixty-six calls had response times surpassing the critical ten-minute mark, some of the slowest in the city. The report further predicted that the emergency response times in Seminole Woods area would deteriorate to well beyond the deadly eight minutes, to an unacceptable twelve to fourteen minutes within a few years. In response, our city is wisely committed to building Fire Station Twenty-Six, slated for completion in twenty-twenty-five. This new station will finally bring us up to par with the rest of Palm Coast. Unfortunately, and very alarmingly, is this rezoning was not considered when those plans were made. And so, we will be adding four hundred and thirty-four more new homes from the original plan, over a thousand new residents. More residents require more service calls, they will also produce more traffic, as we have already admitted. Both of these adversely affect our emergency services response time. The potential repercussions of the zoning extend beyond financial considerations and into the true value of a human life. To press forward without a comprehensive analysis of the health and safety impacts of this rezoning application would be a dereliction of duty of the City Council. It's a negligence we cannot afford to have. It is crucial that our growth strategies, growth strategies are synchronized with the necessary enhancements to our emergency services. The response times in Seminole Woods should not only catch up to what the rest of the city has, but should aim to surpass it, ensuring the continued protection and safety of our citizens. In closing, I urge the council to reject this proposal until a thorough analysis can confirm that sufficient infrastructure will exist that will not compromise our emergency response times in the Seminole Woods neighborhood. The City Council are the guardians of our community's safety, and together, let us forge a path that upholds the sanctity of life above all else.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I'm here tonight in reference to Cascade Project in Seminole Woods. I am against approval of any rezoning to multifamily designation. I am against annexation of county land to increase density, increase traffic, and tax our already overwhelmed infrastructure. You may have heard this speech before. Seminole Woods floods on a light rain, and this project is absolutely going, absolutely going to affect our properties. A few weeks ago, there were a hundred and fifty pep call tanks on one single day, it was a Saturday. I've lived in Palm Coast for thirty-three years. Our family moved here from Long Island, New York, and we grew up in Palm Coast. I've been in the fire service for twenty-two years. I actually started here as an explorer right here in Palm Coast. My husband's a police officer, and he's in the military. We have a child within Flagler County schools. We love Palm Coast, but that's why we bought here, and we didn't buy closer to our jobs. As a first responder, we've seen things, again, like you can't imagine in your worst nightmares. Our decompression is coming home to our family and to our peace and quiet in our backyard. If you rezone this property, you're going to take away that quiet, common peace that we have, along with the quiet, common peace for other people. This development will overlook my backyard, you'll eventually have an increase in fire emergency responses with medical and police-related calls. Currently, a Palm Coast engine is currently occupied at the airport. I understand Station Twenty-Six is being built, but it's not going to be here until twenty-twenty-five. And if that unit is on a call, then the next one, the next Palm Coast unit is coming from Belt Air. That's what's going to come to me in Seminole Woods, from, from Palm Coast. Just last week, we had two separate incidents that I had to leave work and just flat-out leave to get my daughter off the bus, because we had the sheriff's office running around with rifles, because we had a suspect, two of them, on two separate occasions, right when my daughter was getting off the bus. Thank God my neighbor was able to grab her for us, because we weren't there in time. Increasing the density is going to increase the crime. As I've stated before, marketing this as workforce housing is shameful, there's not a single person that's a teacher, firefighter, or police officer in Flagler County that's homeless. You've listened to an hour and a half at the October third meeting of the residents saying that they don't want this rezoning. You've listened to us here, you're listening to us here tonight. At this point, we're begging you, do not approve this. Mayor Alphen, you were quoted in Flagler News Weekly in July of twenty-twenty-three stating that this plan has not accounted for the care, service, and maintenance of a maturing city with aging bones. Financial resources were not reserved to replace or repair maturing infrastructure that is now suffering at an accelerating rate. We purchased our home under the premise of single-family, not having a subdivision across the street with multifamily. The location for apartments should be at town center. They should be accessible to grocery stores and pharmacies, not in residential areas. Additionally, I know I'm supposed to address comments to you, but I did not receive that email from last night's meeting, so if you wouldn't mind, could you get with the lawyer and ask him to forward that to me? I'm sure it was an oversight, but I just, I didn't get it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments?
Okay, again, Renee Newton, Slipper Work at Trail West. So as you as members of the City Council know how the citizens of Palm Coast feel about mixing apartments. about mixing apartments with single-family dwellings, once again, we are requesting the members of the city council vote no to the proposed apartments in the Cascade Development. Also, that the agreement be written for any builder that buys into the Cascade Development that the apartments are not permitted now and in the future, that the properties cannot be rezoned in the future. Please don't make the citizens of Palm Coast regret the decision they made on voting day.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, next speaker, please?
Celia Bugali-C, residence in 1991. I don't live in Seminole Woods, but I traveled it. It is a beautiful area, and we all have the same problems with our city councils throughout the years. It's this rezoning. You know, our zoning where I live, we are fighting if it's already legally a 5G, 150 feet tall 5G cell tower that they wanted to set next to our homes. So, they're fighting for what they bought. We bought with a residential area, and you need an exemption to a residential code to stick that tower to us. And they are fighting the same way for their own reasons. They buy residential. ITT already planned this on a different way that all these rezonings, special zonings, special exemptions that you are giving. It's not ITT's fault. It is what is being rezoned and approved that should not be taking place. Why is our mayor and council and come from the administrators to, oh, if you don't approve it, you're going to be sued? Why? It's not that way. It comes here for approval is because we do have the right to say no, Mr. Mayor, and that's why we want our council and mayor to say, no. Look at what is around. We have residential. All these dreams that you have, oh, more, more multifamily, it's going to be more income taxes. No, it's not going to be more income taxes because the county takes 44%, and we only keep 24%. And then we have to pay additional subsidy for all these people that we are packing up here. The services are very expensive and all of us. All these impact fees that you receive for all these multifamilies that you approve only cover up to certain percentage. I think it's 70-something percent. The rest is paid by all of us. This is not good for us. Stop this. We need from you from these days that we do not approve this rezoning. We are begging you. Most Americans, and I am a naturalized one, I know them from outside the United States, they are, most American people are good, are volunteers. They love their fellow man in general. They are non-confrontational. I have the guts to come here and speak to you because, you know, I come from a different area, and I love the USA, and they're not confrontational. Most of them, you see them there, they won't speak to you. They don't have the same personalities that they need. So, please, even though when they don't speak, and we represent them, the very few, pay attention to us.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir. Please. Sir?
Hello, my name is Alex Smirniko. I am homeowner in Seminole Woods. I moved here a little over a year ago, and the reason that I moved here was the word woods, right? So, I mean, I'm sure you guys are going to hear this story over and over again. Now, the question is, where do we draw the line, right? There is a plan for the city to grow. The infrastructure is not there for the city to grow at the pace that it even is growing now, set aside the 850 proposed units. So, it may sound like a hypothetical question, right? But where do we draw the line? We believe, and there's a lot of people in this crowd that are going to tell you the same thing, that line is right now. So, there is no reason, we expect you guys to vote no on this resolution, and there is no reason why there should be apartments in an area that is, was intended as purely residential, and it needs to stay that way. There's a lot of land here around town center, as somebody mentioned, that is more fitted for this type of a purpose. Now, there's, I mean, there's a ton of issues that I can raise, schools, roads, healthcare, a lot of things that are not prepared for these type of resolutions. So, again, we're expecting you guys to vote no.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I actually just have a couple of questions. You generally represent whoever's...
Sir, sir, come up to the mic and introduce yourself for us, please.
I just have a couple of questions. They represent basically who's getting...
Please introduce yourself so we know for the record.
Max Anderson, live in Seminole Woods.
And then, speak to me.
Who's paying for this? At the end of the day, are you guys paying for it? Because at the end, we got to get more fire, more police, oh, we don't have a police force, more roads. Who's paying for it? We going to get a tax raise on this? We're going to have to fork out more money to cover this on this rezone when you're going to put in this? Well, I mean, is that what's going to happen? Are they paying for it? I mean, they're getting, they're getting paid now if this goes through, so who's paying for it in the end? Somebody has to pay for more school, more road, more police. I mean, yeah, the other day, we had people running around our neighborhood breaking into houses. So, who's going to pay for the extra costs? You guys? Them or us? That's all. I just want to know who's paying for it. I mean, you guys gave yourself a raise, quite a substantial one. I understand it's a lot of work, but are they paying for it? They pay for the raise? Do we pay for the raise? No, we pay for the raise. I just want to know who's paying for this. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
First, good afternoon to the lawyer.
Please go ahead and introduce yourself for us for the record.
All right. I'm Joy Cook. I live on Slipper Trail. To the attorney, the way households are based in real estate, it's two heads per bedroom, just so you know for your information, and every Realtor there will say it as well. Okay, I moved here back in 2004 during the initial growth spurt. I expect to grow, but not at this level, along with other residents. Feeling that this growth, feeling that this growth does not, I'm sorry, feeling that this developer does not care about the impacts that our development makes on existing residents. We are fighting for our quality of life. We are going to be living here for the rest of our lives as developments, as a developer, once he is done, he will leave and it will be done. We are fine with the single-family homes, but we, but not with apartment complexes in a single-family area. Slow growth is ideal, and that many residents may have, I'm sorry, may have shared the same implement and multiple public forums, including the Imagine 2050 event that the city had hosted. I do have a background in real estate, and I understand the level of growth is going to cause issues, similarity to what years ago when the market crashed during the initial growth spurt of Palm Coast we had in the late 200s. I do not want to see, I do not want to see our developers or our contract have the defaults on their loans because of this fallen market. Overdevelopment of this area could easily lead to another housing crash as the area slowly proceeds. We have over 500 homes over the 300 mark in inventory right now. We are at a stable market. What you will do when you keep down in these developments is you are going to put us back into a buyer's market, and that is going to cause the crash. I do not have to tell you. You're a real estate agent, you know. Stop doing this to single-family residents. We all moved here for a single-family community. Stop doing this to us. Look at the faces that you are doing this to. Look at the people who have been here all along. Worry about these people in this community, not the people who might be moving here. You had voted to take care of us, and right now, we don't feel like you are. Stop developing in areas where the agent infrastructure cannot handle it, just to get the money to build the new, the new infrastructure westward. Okay? These new developments are being approved to pay for the high-end western frontier. We are not going to be fooled by this. We know what the plan is. We've heard it. We know what it is. You have families here. I cannot express it. I live right off of Seminole Woods. This traffic they're talking about was not done during peak, okay? I could tell you right now, my house shakes with all these construction trucks. It has to be four or five times it was two years ago. And I am asking you, and I am begging you, do not let this go through. Let us be the first example of Palm Coast because people out there are listening to what we have to say, and this is, and they are watching. They're going to watch every move you make, and they will remember this on election day. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
All right. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Mattel. My family and I moved to Seminole Woods 19 years ago, actually just last month, and we moved from South Florida. We wanted to get out of South Florida because of the congestion and all the other hassles that go with that congestion, and we chose Palm Coast because we were told that Palm Coast was a single-family home city with the exception of town center. My wife and I have been busting our butts for 19 years to keep the value of our house up. We do everything that we can to make sure that it stays as beautiful as it was 19 years ago, and I just want to echo some of the sentiments that these other people have been saying, and I'm going to ask a question that you may deem inappropriate, but would any of you want an apartment building built next to your house? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another, excuse me. Let's let the next speaker come up, please. Is there another speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sandy Silva, and I live in Seminole Woods. I came from Los Angeles, California, so I know the traffic. The traffic is bad, but there are also a lot more lanes and there's streets than there is in Seminole Woods. There's only two lane, one going this way, one going that way. The infrastructure is not there. We don't have enough police. When we first moved out here, our car was stolen out of our driveway. Nothing ever happened when we lived in LA, yet when we moved out here, our car was stolen. Imagine that. Safe Palm Coast, safe Palm Coast. That's why we moved out here, because it's how friendly everybody was, even the New Yorkers. Everybody was friendly. Everything was safe, yet our car was stolen out of our driveway. However, there's no police to manage the area. All the police are over on Bulldog because of the apartment buildings there. There's not the infrastructure. There's not the police. You built another hospital, great, but the hospital is not able to hold anybody. They can't airlift people out. I know. I was airlifted out of the one on 100, but the one in Palm Coast Parkway can't lift anybody out. There is just way too much building going on, and an 800-plus building is not the right answer, Mayor. It is not. Please rethink it. Our water, our sewage, our drainage, it can't handle anything. How many more trucks do we need coming down Seminole Woods? It's going to ruin the road that was just repaved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Stansel. You enter Palm Coast, and there's a sign on Seminole Woods, and it says, "City of Trees." Well, why would we want to call it the City of Trees if we're going to knock them all down? Okay? And up on Roberts Road is a big apartment complex being built, huge. It's a good place for it because there's not a lot of residents there, and we probably don't have enough people to even move into that. Why do we need to build more in a residential area that is so beautiful? The vision for Palm Coast is not to tear it down, it's to keep it nice and beautiful. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker, please? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Laura Hannan. I own the home in Seminole Woods, and I know we've spent some time today disputing, you know, is it the 11th edition or the 12th edition and all that kind of stuff, and what is really a single-family home and densities and all that kind of stuff? Well, I've been in a lot of math classes, and I'll tell you, a professor once told me that there's statistics, damn lies, and statistics. And we bought our home almost 20 years ago. We've been through the firestorms, we've been through hurricanes, we've been through the market crash, and I'm asking you guys, as a resident who actually lives in this space and is invested in this community, who shops here, who pays the additional percentage sales tax versus driving to Volusia County where I work every single day, to stop. Stop it. We don't need 850 more homes. Guys, you've asked us to trust you. Well, you know what? That little park in Seminole Woods where my, both my kids have enjoyed playing, y'all, you can't even get the sidewalk, not the flood, so they can ride their bikes to the park without everybody getting their socks wet, okay? The mulch in that little park floats. The parking area has had lots of problems, and my kids were once offered drugs at your little park, and that's what the number of residents we have currently in Seminole Woods. The bathroom faucet there in the bathroom that you guys maintain drips, 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 drips. But yet, you're telling us to trust you to redesign our backyard, basically, and put in another 850 homes. Now, let's talk about the schools, because we live here, and your schools, if you pull up, according to the Daytona Beach News-Journal and Flagler Live, you guys are looking at international teachers to address the shortages. International teachers to address the shortage. Maybe they're going to live in some of these apartments because you can't even get teachers for the kids we currently have, and yet you're looking to put, give it a number, I don't care what number you give it, but 850 units, what fraction of that might be kids? Oh, we might be off by a couple hundred, but we don't even have teachers for the kids we do have. Now, we could also talk about the police, as some other people have mentioned, the other resources. I'm thankful right now, my husband and I are young and healthy, but you know what? When our poor dog got sick, we were told we were going to have to drive to St. Augustine because the local vet hospital was closed, okay? I've had two kids. Guess where I had to go? Out of county because we don't even have a maternity ward at our local hospital. And yet, you guys are focusing on putting more homes in our backyard when y'all can't even build a sidewalk, right? I don't have a lot of faith, guys, and I really want to change that, and you have the power tonight to change that. So, please, consider and stop this insanity.
Thank you for your comment. Is...
Peter Johnson again, Palm Coast. To echo what a few people have said so far, we have fundamental issues in the city, and they're not being addressed. And quite frankly, Mayor, your facial expressions right now say everything that we need to know about it because you just don't care, flat out, and it shows, and the residents are pissed about it. And you're about to say not to clap to them, but that's the unity of the people all coming together and saying that we have issues that need to be addressed, and these people show up all the time and say it. So, to sit here and say like, oh, well, you know, it's going to be 850 versus this versus that, it doesn't matter. This is a fundamental issue of people do not believe that apartments should go here because it's going to affect their quality of life. I'm not here to argue about the rezoning or what it should be designated or what it is. This project is going to not only be bad for the residents of Seminole Woods, but also the people of Palm Coast citywide, right? I live over in the C-section. I pay taxes in the C-section. I don't really want to have to contribute to the third repaving of the road because it was just repaved, and now we have trucks running through it and destroying it, and then it has to be widened when the traffic studies are done with the new 850 houses. There's a list of fundamental issues that are not being addressed in Palm Coast. So, before we start trying to expand the city's footprint and annexing in more land to the county, we have to take care of the people that are here. And quite frankly, I'm afraid it falls on deaf ears, but we get up here and say it over and over again because it has to be said and heard.
Thank you for your comment. Are there... Yes, ma'am.
I'm taking my chance. Hi, my name is Liz Shanahan, 73 Seattle Trail. I was here a couple of weeks ago. I found some interesting things that I want to go over with you. Number one, on the applications of the Cascades, I brought up Cascades on the county website, there are several applications for Cascades with different numbers. Some have units, some have lots. So, I'm confused about, shouldn't there be one or two, four Cascades and one for lots because we're building homes and one for units because there are supposedly apartments going up? That's the first thing. September, in February of 28th, '22, the proposed 416-home age-restricted community earned initial approval, and that was at Cascades. So, that was very interesting, the way things go back and forth here. There was also a quote that I found from Ms. Pontieri, not Ms. Pontieri, Ms.... No, I can't find it. Ms.? Ms. Hyder, saying that we should take another look at what the people want, which I was very interested about. There's also other things that I want to reiterate. The traffic on the Parkway, it goes from four lanes to two lanes. Where are the traffic lights? We need traffic lights. There are so many new intersections coming out there, so many people. We need traffic lights to keep our residents safe. We also need a plan. Now, I asked about this last time and I haven't read anything or heard anything about a plan of infrastructure. What are we going to do with our infrastructure before any of this building starts? I know the building is years away, but you have to have a plan. Plans take years to build. What are we going to do about no more car washes and storage centers? I know they're needed, but they're going up a dime a dozen. It's low overhead and it's usually minimum-wage workers that work there. Let's get businesses in Palm Coast that want Palm Coast have been asked to come to Palm Coast and have been denied Palm Coast. And that's all I have time for. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional speakers?
My name is Ramazani. My wife and I searched for years where we were going to retire and we found Palm Coast and fell in love with it. And Seminole Woods is where we chose to build our house and live there. And we enjoy everything about Palm Coast. It's beautiful. We love every day that we live here. And the thought of not being able to take our bike rides, just like we do every day, because it'd be congested and... Right now, currently, when we come out of Sesame, it doesn't matter what end you go, there's a long line to get out because Seminole Woods is so busy. If you put all those, you know, eight-hundred-and-fifty homes there, I don't see how anybody's going to get out of that road, to tell you the truth. I mean, we could go there in the morning to go to the store and we're sitting there ten, fifteen minutes just to get out of the, just to get out onto Seminole Woods now. So, if you put another eight-hundred-and-fifty units there, it'd be impossible. Or people on Slipper Street, I don't even know how they'd even get out of there. They'd be sitting there for hours. So, you know, I guess I'm formally, I just want to come up here and formally reject the proposal for this and hope that you can help us with that. We love Palm Coast and love to keep it just the way it is and keep it residential and no, no multi-dwellings.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Karen Ashman, Seminole Woods. I was here previously and I think I let you guys know it took two years, two years to build my house. And this has been a dream of mine to be in Florida. And I chose Palm Coast because of the beauty. I think I told you that last time. I'm still trying to find my way and I can't wait to take the class. I'll definitely do that, but I'm just concerned. I implore you not to vote on these multifamily dwellings. The population on the, on the drive on Seminole Woods Boulevard, it's terrible. When I'm walking my dogs, the traffic in the residential parts, it's terrible. Because if there's accidents on the main road, everyone's trying to cut through and then they find out they're going in a circle, circle, circle because you can't get out. I'm also concerned, since I've been here, I can't sleep with my windows open. I'm sitting there working. I've got helicopters going over my house. Because the fugitives think that Seminole Woods Boulevard is just where they need to come and hide. We need to consider the emergency responses are, like, I'm echoing everyone. I don't need to repeat everything that was said. Where are we going to put all these people? The infrastructure is not there. We need to build our infrastructure. Palm Coast is a beautiful city. And we need to focus on other things other than bringing a multifamily home dwelling in between single-family homes. I get growth. I want growth. But again, it's Seminole Woods. It's beautiful. It's woods and that's why I picked this side of town. I understand this was planned years ago. Please do not vote on these multi-dwellings. Please. I am begging you, please. I just, I'm dealing with the flooding on the streets. I didn't know that was going to come. I'm just dealing, I've only been here since February. February. And I don't know if I want to stay. Mayor, I need you to protect us. I need you to step up and do what the folks voted. I wasn't here to vote you in, but I need you to step up and protect the people of this city that they voted you in for. Because I know I'm watching and I know I'm definitely voting on the next one when I'm here. Please vote no. Please.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any more speakers?
Daniel Seaman, Seminole Woods. As I alluded to earlier, there are a minimum of two laws that need to be addressed here. There are members of the council and including yourself, Mayor, that have blatant conflicts of interest that should recuse yourself from even being able to vote. You have an active Realtor license. The fact that you're even considering zoning or voting on a zoning thing that directly impacts you because you have business dealings with not only the developer, but your business partner, et cetera, is most certainly a conflict of interest. Mr. Danko, your current girlfriend's a Realtor.
Please, sir, address your comments to me.
Okay. Mr. Danko over there, his current girlfriend is in real estate, so he's kind of in the wiggle room. You are a current Realtor. There is a lot of conflict of interest and a lot of intertwining in the development of this neighborhood. We, as a community, have single-family homes for a reason. We are single families. Changing it to a multifamily is going to change it from Seminole Woods to Seminole hood. I mean, we don't want that. I don't need to reiterate a lot of the other points. The eight-hundred-and-fifty max, the current, from our meeting last night, we kind of got some more details. The current thing is from somewhere between three and four hundred of single-family homes. The rest of the four hundred is coming in that multifamily, twelve-building apartment complex. Whack them and stack them in there. That's a problem for various reasons that everybody else has mentioned. Fundamentally, it's what we're seeing in the United States is we're too worried about what's going on elsewhere and not worried about what's going on here. We're too worried about worrying about the money going in our own pockets and not worried about everybody else that's affected. There's plenty of a paper trail from donations from Mr. Douglas to your campaign. We found all that. It's public information. It's public knowledge. So, my suggestion is that those that have conflicts of interest should probably just straight up recuse themselves from voting on this because there's state statutes, there's RESPA laws, and quite frankly, you're going to, most likely, if you do that, you're going to get yourself in legal trouble.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker, please? All right. Seeing no additional speakers, all right. Come on, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, since he referenced me, can I address this quickly?
Let's get through the public comment.
Okay.
Good evening. Joelle Almeida, Seminole Woods residence. I spoke back in September. I have two little girls, as I had brought my two-year-old with me last time. I'm going to be short and sweet. No, 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 no. I sound like I'm talking to my two-year-old and with the eye rolls as well, Mr. Mayor. I feel like you need a timeout. But on a serious note, I work in the medical field. It is maxed. Doctors are leaving Palm Coast. Where are we going to, my children's pediatrician no longer takes new patients. Specialists, I have to go to Jacksonville. I had to wait three months for my, at the time, fourteen-month-old baby to have a pediatric CAT scan. I almost flew to Yale Children's Hospital because I could not get in to see if my child had cancer. So, Mr. Mayor, I live off a slipper. I will be affected. My children, who are in the school system, will be affected and I'm really seriously considering packing up my family and moving because this is not the Palm Coast I came in 2010. Thank you so much. Please say no.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
My name's Dave Dillon. I live in Seminole Woods. Do we know how many available lots, undeveloped lots, are in Seminole Woods today? That are undeveloped?
This is your chance for public comment, so...
Excuse me?
This is your chance for public comment, so go ahead.
Well, I'm asking the council if they are aware of how many already undeveloped lots are in Seminole Woods. There are quite a few and now we want to bring more people in, like all the people have said. We're struggling down there now. It's on you guys. You got to do the right thing.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And I would ask the developer, would you like to address the questions and comments? And then, Mr. Danko, we'll get back to your comment.
Sure, thank you. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have. There were a few things that needed some clarity. So, in this process, both the city, state, and federal laws, regulations, require that comprehensive plan amendments and zonings abide by a process. Part of that process is to have experts evaluate what I'll call under the umbrella of infrastructure. Includes roads, water, sewer, stormwater, flooding, schools, emergency services. So, for ever, at least in my professional career of twenty-four years, and I'm sure your attorney sees this in many of our other jurisdictions, that the city's professional staff that they employ, their engineers, their fire department, their stormwater people, their planners, evaluate every application to ensure that it is scrutinized and that they satisfy both state, local, federal laws, rules, regulations, and processes. So, you have seen that both the planning board unanimously voted for these applications. You've seen that the staff, your professional staff, your experts have recommended approval. You've seen that the developers' experts have also provided support for that. And you've also seen that the state of Florida has reviewed at least the comprehensive plan application and found it compliant. So, all of those issues regarding infrastructure, emergency services are satisfied. That doesn't mean that there won't be other additional...
He's folks, please. He let you speak. Please let...
That doesn't mean that there won't be infrastructure that the city is currently planning. We all know that you have a five- and a ten-year capital improvement plan, but that's what your experts continue to plan for. So, your comments about infrastructure as it relates specifically to the second one have been satisfied. So, I guess it just boils down to what Ms. Pontieri talks about is compatibility. I think some of the people are mostly concerned with the residents of a multifamily project. You heard one individual suggest that it would be Seminole hood rather than Seminole Woods. I know that most of us on the council all believe and the residents and your staff and the vision of the entire Palm Coast community agrees that we have to provide diversity of housing, whether it be townhouses, multifamily, and the like. And so, this project...
Folks, please. Folks, please. I won't ask again, okay? I won't ask again until the mayor's back, so he won't ask again.
So, the overall plan of this project certainly satisfies the goals and objectives of the City of Palm Coast that they have, that you've had for twenty years. And then particularly in the last few years, when you go back and you read what your pillars of vision are. So, the project certainly complies with that and including the laws. I recognize that, and we've all been at this for a long time, that nobody likes it in their backyard. They want it somewhere else and that's okay. That's their prerogative. But the project before you today is to provide that plan that we have put forth. That doesn't mean that we have not listened to the community and tried to address some of their concerns. At last night's meeting, we've heard comments that we don't want anything there. We've heard comments that we don't want anything other than single-family. Why can't you bring jobs? Those types of things. So, in an effort to accommodate, you know, some of the concerns of the residents in that neighborhood, not the community, but just those residents, we put forth the letter today to you making those commitments and we're willing to do them in whatever way that the city council is comfortable with so that it's binding on successors and assigns. There are, there are some other things that we can talk about. After we have done some of the analysis, we know that we don't need eight-hundred-and-fifty dwelling units, so we're able to reduce that by a hundred.
Please. The speaker was kind enough to allow you to speak, so I think you should offer him the same courtesy.
So, we've done that in our letter. There are two, on the rezoning portions, there are two multifamily parcels, the one to the east. We went to this meeting last night and we have agreed that those would be limited to townhouses. And if the developer wanted to come back and do residential units there, that they would make a petition to the council. On the eastern portion of the project, where there is a multifamily site there, we have agreed to provide a sixty-five-foot vegetative buffer that we think is sufficient. It'll be at eighty percent opacity. Those are planning terms so that it'll substantially screen those buildings that are there. We've also added a commitment to placing any building a hundred-and-fifty feet from the existing right-of-way. So, that puts us about two-hundred-and, I think, thirty or fifty feet from an existing house where the building might be. So, we've agreed to extend that setback. In addition to that, we've also agreed that under the zoning code of MFR2, it allows for a sixty-foot height of a building and we've agreed to lower that to forty feet. We anticipate that those buildings will be three stories and you have to accommodate, you know, architectural requirements and peaks and eaves and slopes of roofs. So, those are all things that the developer, who has listened to the community, listened to the two public meetings, have gone and tried to accommodate some of their concerns rather than just saying, I don't want anything in my backyard or I don't want to create Seminole hood. And that's where we're at. And that doesn't mean that we're not still open to address some of your concerns and we're here to talk about them as they may come forth. So, I don't really have anything more to add, since we've already voted on this four-to-one. State's approved it. Staff has recommended approval and nothing's changed since the last time, other than...
So...
Go ahead.
So, I have a question. Lady of Councilwoman Pontieri returns. Councilwoman, the applicant has finished his kind of Q and A and I have a question for the applicant and then I'm, actually, I'm going to ask you first before I ask the applicant. Would you all be in agreement to ask the applicant to go back to the community based on the fact that a letter was issued just today with a number of changes in response to some number of the objections by the community? I don't have a good sense and I'm uncomfortable that the community, the neighborhood, is not fully aware and has not been brought up to speed regarding that information. I'm not looking to kick a can down the road, but I'm not comfortable that the public information has been put out to all of those concerns. So, just... So just from each of you, is that something that you would be in favor or not?
I'd like to know if that is something the applicant would...
Well, let's ask us first, and then we'll ask the applicant.
I would be okay with that.
Again, I'd like to know if the applicant would be comfortable with that.
Let's get City Council. Is this something that we would like to ask the applicant?
Mayor...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to be probably a little brutally candid here. Councilman Clufus, who has consistently voted in favor of increased density and further development, is absent tonight. Therefore, he is a vital vote that would likely be in favor of this. I am not in favor of continuing this for that reason. He is not here, and I think that kicking this can down the road is in order to gain another positive vote. So I'm not in favor of it. Furthermore, Mayor, furthermore...
Go ahead.
We can vote on this current ordinance without it affecting the neck, because what Mr. Timento is referring to is the multifamily, which is, to your point, a different ordinance. That's zoning. This is the ordinance on the DRI, so we should be able to vote on this without it being affected by the, I think, by the proposals that concern the multifamily zoning.
So, Councilwoman, it seems to me you were concerned earlier that not all of the residents may have been aware of the last-minute letter.
That can be put on the record right now.
You made a comment earlier in the meeting, but you're no longer concerned about that?
It's not that, Mayor. I asked that that be put in the record right now, and it can be done right now.
But that doesn't help any of the residents that aren't here.
Mayor...
So it's just, well, that's exactly what I'm saying. It's like, I think every one of you should get the letter.
Mayor?
Yeah.
My position stands. This is an effort to get another vote on this council.
I'm just trying to get you to be consistent in your response. Okay. Councilwoman Hyder?
I have no comment.
No comment, okay.
I guess, and I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman, I do, but I'm just curious, after everything we've heard tonight, is would the applicant be willing to come back with a few additional changes that might satisfy some of these concerns? But before I even go on, folks, a lot of you know me, and I'm not going to BS you. I tell you where I stand on things. And, you know, we're going to grow. I mean, that's just America. That is what we do. Everybody here wants low taxes, and I fight for low taxes, all right? But I can't do it if we just have 92% of our tax revenue coming from homes. We need to attract businesses. How are we going to attract businesses, folks? How are we going to make that happen? We need...
All right, all right.
Rooftops, ladies and gentlemen, and we need places for young people to first rent and then buy their first house. Not everyone's going to buy, you know?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor.
All right, it's kind of hard to explain. I mean, but it's reality, and it's the truth. And I'm going to tell you the truth, because we can't keep lowering taxes or reducing taxes if we don't have the rooftops, if we don't have the younger population, if we don't attract more businesses, and if we don't create better-paying jobs. And that's what happens. We cannot live in Mayberry for the rest of our lives. I wish we could. I really do. And, hold on, I'm speaking. You had your public comment. This is my chance now. And I just want to say, I just want to say to you folks that, you know, we've got to make some changes and some compromises. If the applicant is willing to make a few changes, that might make it a little bit better. He's already given this huge, huge buffer, and, well, it is. It is. But, you know, the setback that they've offered, they've increased it 150 feet. They've dropped the building from 60 to 40. They may drop an apartment building if we give them a chance, but we do, we are going to grow, and that's just the truth. I'm not going to lie to you and tell you what you want to hear. I'm going to tell you the truth. And I want to address the one person who referenced my better half as a real estate agent, because my better half has only one listing in Palm Coast. She only sold one home in Palm Coast this year. She doesn't do her business in Palm Coast. She works for an investment firm out of LA, and she does stuff all across the country, but not Florida. Not Florida. So we don't have any ties to any of the local developers or anything of that nature. And I just want to make that clear for the record.
Vice Mayor, you made it clear. Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Does the applicant have any final comments?
If you're asking me if we'll continue to work with the residents, of course we will, you know, but there is a, there is a point in time when there's limited what we can do. The other problem that I ask you all to consider is, you know, who are we working with? Today, it's 20; tomorrow, it's... And so how do you satisfy that? And I think that's, we've heard the commitments or the comments from the community. You all are there. We're here to work with you all to address those. I can't go out and make everybody happy. What I can do is develop a project that meets the goals and objectives of the city council and the city. You've heard from all the experts that says that this project is compliant with your goals, objectives, and visions. And if, you know, we keep bending and bending and bending, if there's something specific that you would like, ask, but I don't think it's going to do us, us as a collective group, a whole lot of good that if we go out and have another community meeting with 80 people, that we're going to, we're going to come to a consensus.
Thank you. Staff, any final comments, any corrections on any of the either assumptions or data that was suggested? Anything that you'd need to comment on?
Jose, do you have anything on the comp plan?
No.
No, I, I would just, I guess, add that, you know, just to be clear, that, you know, what the total density of this is 2.27, you know, if we get into the zoning. So it's a low density, and when...
Please.
Mr. Papa was showing the future land use. You have one, future land use district of residential, and it clearly shows the compatibility. And just, just know that compatibility really doesn't mean same-as, okay? It, it, it's, it's different things. Just because something is different, like a multifamily to a residential, doesn't mean it's not compatible. We look at things of bulk. We look at noise. We look at light pollution. Look at all those different things that could be inappropriate land uses adjacent to it. So our professional opinion, following our comp plan, because our comprehensive plan spells, spells it out. They talked for, about a variety of different housing choices in the city of Palm Coast. It really strikes for that. So this is on a, you know, a major corridor on Seminole Woods. And to the east, with Jose's presentation, you already saw that we had mixed use that has an existing multifamily. There's also multifamily zoning, I'm sorry, farther to the west. So just know that compatibility does not mean exactly alike, okay? There's other factors that we play in to show that it's compatible.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
Yes, sir.
Any final comments from City Council?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, did you have anything else to say?
Well, go ahead.
Okay.
Make your final comment, because I'm going to call a vote.
So I want to be very clear that I don't want to diminish the work that our staff has done. As always, I thank you for your insight or the work that the applicant has put into this and working with the residents. My objection to this is not based on the zoning. I want to be very clear about that. My objection to this ordinance is based on the fact that it will limit development to 850 units. We agreed to annex in this property, knowing that it was limited to 416 units, and that would be my recommendation. That would be what I vote for in this case, to limit it. Whether or not it's single-family or multifamily, if you want to provide diversity of housing as the developer, and the integrity to do that is actually in place, then you can do that on a rezoning simply for multifamily, still keeping it at 416 dwelling units. You're not doing that. The applicant has asked the city to agree to annex it in, which we did, but not in keeping it at 416 dwelling units, rather more than doubling it to 850 to include single-family and multifamily. And when I look at the requirements that we have to consider a city council, which is being, must not be in public, conflict with the public interest, a lot of folks bought their properties, knowing that there were not going to be multifamily housing units around them. More importantly, they bought their properties, knowing that there was a cap, because this plan has been in place, I think, since 2004, 2005, knowing there was going to be a cap at 416 units. And it must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. I want to direct everybody's attention to page 95 of the packet, because that very explicitly lays out the extra strain that this will put on our resources because of more than doubling the dwelling units. We're looking at 391 more trips per hour, I believe, or trips per day than we would have at the original estimation of 416 dwelling units. Potable water, which is a necessity, obviously. We are increasing it by 130, 200 gallons per day by the increase in dwelling units. Sanitary sewer, 85,411 gallons per day. Solid waste, 8,968 pounds per day. 8.3 acres is more, more in recreation and parks that we need to keep up. Public education, 92 students, which I think that's incredibly low. My point is this: We cannot plan as a city for infrastructure, and that encompasses a whole lot: roads, water, public safety. We cannot plan appropriately if we continue to do this. We cannot plan... It's one thing to annex in and say, okay, we want to annex in 410, land that allows for 416 units. We're already doing something that we didn't anticipate by annexing that property in. Now we want to double it. So this, this is an inappropriate action for this council to take based on the strain that it will put on our current resources and on our current taxpayers. Yes, there will be impact fees, but they're shiny pennies. They pay for initial things at the beginning. They do not pay for the longevity that the resources will be sucked up in the long run. And I just, this is the last thing I want to say. The Flagler County Tax Collector just presented a presentation to the city of Flagler Beach on the development that is in the pipeline for the entire county. The estimated population impact, this comes straight from the Flagler County Tax Collector, that our development that's currently in the pipeline right now will have is a, is a population increase of 31,000. Now, I know that we don't have a temporal component. That could happen over the next year, the next two years, the next three years, but currently, right now, we have asked the state for tens of millions of dollars just for water in our city. Potable water and wastewater treatment plan expansion. We cannot afford this. We can't. And this, and looking at this development by itself in a vacuum, you may say, oh, it's only, it's only 850 units. This has become a pandemic in our city. We need to stop it. So you can call a vote, Mayor, but I make a motion to deny.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a, just a couple items. While you were in the restroom, I believe the applicant came up and said they don't need 850 units.
I heard it. He could go down 100.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you heard that. The second, the second thing is, the criteria that you were reading was from the rezoning criteria and not the comp plan amendment criteria. So I just want to, if you don't mind, allow me to go through the comp plan amendment criteria, so we're all on the same page and we know exactly what it is. Okay, not your decision.
Wow.
The comp plan policy 1.1.3.3 states, and this is one of the, just one. There are others, too, but I'll read this first, because it comes, it touches on compatibility, which I believe was the first thing that you mentioned, Councilmember Pontieri. At a minimum, compatibility with proximate uses and development patterns shall be considered when evaluating proposed flume amendments. This policy shall not be considered to mean that different categories of uses are inherently incompatible. Rather, it is intended to promote the use of transitional areas where densities and intensities can be appropriately scaled. Buffers are encouraged as an effective means of transition between areas where there is a greater degree of disparity in terms of densities and intensities. And finally, impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding residents shall be considered. So those are all the items that should be considered when you're, when you're looking at the compatibility criteria for comp plan amendments. The other criteria include environmental factors, you know, topography, wetland, which in this, we have a request here to designate, I think, 67 acres in conservation for the wetland areas that are on site. So that comes into play, considering that, since they do have wetlands on site. And then, infrastructure and availability and capacity is also a consideration, too, which you mentioned. And those are looking at existing and future capacity of roadways based on functional classifications, as you noted earlier, with the trip generation analysis and the traffic study, capacity of water and sewer systems, and drainage, stormwater capacity. And finally, the thing that's considered is public school facilities, and then these are sent, amendments like this are sent to the school district, and they provide comments back. So staff includes or presents any comments that the school district provides as to capacity for schools based on the density planned.
So thank you, City Attorney, for that. Then my...
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion on the floor.
Right, but I would like to respond because our attorney...
Well, no, no, we have a motion. So let me ask...
Mayor?
I'm sorry, you made...
In order for my motion, in order for my motion to be legally correct, I think I need to correct the record. Am I not correct, Attorney?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, that's why I jumped in, because if you're going to deny, then there, there should be evidence to support the doubt based on the criteria for the comp plan amendment.
For the comp plan, thank you. So based on the criteria for the comp plan, my, my motion to deny is specifically due to the strain on infrastructure, the lack of infrastructure, the impact on the schools, and specifically to the fact that the policy is to limit the development to 850 units rather than the 416 that was previously prescribed. Thank you.
Now, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a second from Councilperson Hyder. Is there any, well...
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
So one of the things, and I have a question for the applicant. One of the things I sense that people are most objecting to is the apartment part of it. Mr. Timento, would your client be willing to drop the apartments and just do townhouses there instead?
No.
Well, I mean, townhouses.
Single-family.
No.
Single-family.
Would you, would your client be willing to drop the apartment?
So the zoning is for a category called MFR 2, and it provides for multiple different townhouses, condominiums, and apartments. We have already made the commitment on the eastern one to go to townhouses, okay? So that we are a commitment. Are you asking me to do that also on the western portion, which is about 20...
If, yes, if you'd be agreeable to that.
I, I think if that is what the council would like to see, then, yeah, we can do that.
That doesn't affect the zoning. What we're voting on right now is just the comp plan. That specifically goes to the zoning, so that's separate.
So to your, your response, you know, I don't know, we can do that. If that's what the council would, would like, we'll do that. That's, that's fine. Yes, sir.
So we have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion from City Council?
No, Mayor.
So do I have to put this out to the public?
No. Public comment's closed.
So roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Hyder?
No.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion pass, I'm sorry, the motion...
Dies.
Dies, yeah. It has...
Oh, wait, wait, hold on. I'm, no, I'm confused about the vote. We're voting in favor of this or against this?
Okay, so...
I mean, which is...
The motion was, the motion was a motion to deny.
All right, so...
So if...
Oh, the motion to, yes.
It was to deny. So if you wanted, did it, if you wanted it to deny...
So I want to just clarify, my vote is no. I do not want to deny. I mean, well, deny her motion or... Get, straighten me out.
Okay.
The motion to deny the amendment to the comp plan.
Right.
So it would not approve this. It would not approve what we have in front of us.
So if you agree with the denial, then you vote yes.
Okay, so my vote was no. I do not agree with her denial.
Okay, can we...
I, I agree with Teresa Pontieri.
But you voted no.
Okay, okay.
Well, I was confused, too. I was confused.
Start over.
So...
Let's start over.
So the motion that Councilmember Pontieri to deny, and the second by Councilmember Hyder, was called a vote, and there's not a majority, so the motion doesn't pass.
Oh, it doesn't?
So we're left...
So her motion doesn't pass?
Right.
They're applauding her. Okay.
Right, well, yeah, so their motion, so, so then, so you have to take some type of action. Right, well, yeah, so their motion, so then, so you have to take some type of action on this, so we need another motion.
So I'd make a motion to approve the applicant if he, if we include not putting in apartment buildings and limiting to 750.
Excuse me. Make your motion, Vice Mayor.
My motion is to approve as long as there's no apartment.
Is there a second?
Okay, Mayor, the, for the comprehensive plan amendment, it can't be conditioned on a product type. And actually, for a straight rezoning, and we'll get to that, we can't have conditions there either. Now, as we talked about before, the applicant can put private deed restrictions on the property or enter an agreement, if there's an HOA or something like that, to be held accountable for what they can do on their property. But from the city's perspective, from a comp plan perspective, we can't limit the comp plan for product type.
Okay.
We can only do it for density. So if, and actually, for a conventional rezoning, the Supreme Court has stated that you can't condition a conventional rezoning. So the conditions that the applicant has put forth are ones that will have to be handled privately and can't be required through the city in a conventional rezoning.
Can the applicant come back? If we, if we, if we push this down to another, next business meeting, are we gonna be, can we give the applicant a chance to come back with some changes and numbers and stuff?
So at any point, there can be a motion to continue this matter or a motion-- Yeah.
This is confusing, and there's a lot of feelings here.
Make a motion.
And again, well, no, I'm sorry, folks, there is. And so I'd like to make a motion that we continue this.
So I have a motion to continue. Is there a second? No second.
Motion dies for lack of a second. So now we're left with, there's no motions on the table. The City Council, you know, needs to, I mean, put forth another motion to see if that will pass. That's the next step.
I can, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance FLUM amendment to limit it to the original 416 dwelling units.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Pontieri has made a motion. Councilwoman Hyder has seconded. Any other discussion?
Well, so with the motion you've made and with what I just heard from our attorney, that we're not limiting any products then in here. So it could be 450 apartments.
But that's a separate ordinance. That's a separate vote. That's the rezoning vote. This is only on residential specifically for the FLUM amendment. That's it. It's from residential to residential.
All right, go ahead, call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to one.
We now move to item number 12. If you'd read that in for us.
Item number 12 is a rezoning application number 5107, The Cascades at Grand Landings. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code for 375 acres of certain real property described as tax parcel identification numbers 3012, 310000, 010200040, 3112, 3100000107, 00030, 3212, 310650000B00020, 2912, 31000001010021, and 2912, 31000001010025. Generally located on the northwest side of Seminole Woods Boulevard, about a half mile northeast of US Highway 1, and being more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, from Flagler County designations of planned unit development and new rural communities to the single-family residential SFR-1, multifamily residential 2, MFR-2, and preservation PRS zoning districts, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. City Council, this is a quasi-judicial matter. As you know, you're required to state any ex parte, disclose any ex parte communications you've had on the record with regard to this matter. There are, there were ex parte communications at two different City Council meetings previously where members of the public came and spoke that was outside the quasi-judicial meeting. So I'm gonna read through those now so that they're on the record. Then I'll need you to state whether or not you've had any additional ex parte communications. And then I'll ask you whether or not these ex parte communications will affect the decision that you're making here in today. So the comments, joint public comments on 10-3 City Council meeting came from Jessica Matthews in opposition, Peter Johnson-- These were on, sorry, Jessica Matthews on traffic infrastructure and compatibility with the neighborhood, Peter Johnson, overcrowding and reckless development, Steven Matthews was not in favor, negative effects to property, flooding, overcrowding, and a myriad of other issues. Joy Cook was not in favor, talked about the real estate market, housing trends, and other items. Samuel Semaglia was not in favor of the project and was concerned about the quality of life among other matters. Liz Shanahan was in opposition, was concerned about an ISO and the limited buffer, privacy concerns, and a myriad of other issues. Renee Newton was in opposition. And in general, Victor Rodriguez spoke about the project and talked about responsible growth, infrastructure, schools, and other issues. Eileen Testa did not support the project and was concerned with school overcrowding and buses. Ms. Ruth shared concern for development, overcrowding, waterways, flooding, roads. Karen Ashman was concerned for healthcare, community services, safety, traffic, and flooding. Then there was one additional comment at the 10-24 Special City Council Workshop Meeting from Mr. Jeffrey Seib, concerned about compatibility of the project in general. City Council members, have you heard any other ex parte communications in addition to the ones I just read off?
Yeah, emails from both sides, couple of public comments, nothing that affects--
Both sides in objection and in support? Okay.
Same, emails and messages with regards to, from both sides with regards to either objection or adding elements in favor, trying to work with the residents, and that won't affect my decision.
Okay, thank you.
Same. No effect.
Only emails that I've received is the one that we received yesterday regarding the cascade.
Okay. Yep, thank you all very much. Since this is a quasi-judicial matter, the city clerk will now administer the oath and swear in anyone that plans to speak on this matter. Please be sworn in now. That includes members of the public too. If you're planning on speaking.
If you will be testifying in this item, please rise and raise your right hand to swear or affirm the oath. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, City Clerk. Mayor, that's all I have. We can turn it over to staff now.
Okay.
Mayor, this is the companion rezoning to the last item. Mr. Hoover will have the presentation, second read. Good evening. Bill Hoover, I'm a senior planner with Community Development Department.
Bill, can you just speak a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Site has Flagler County zoning categories of PUD, which also stands for Planned Unit Development. That's shown in the gray color, as well as NRC, which stands for New Rural Communities. That's sort of shown in the neon green. The NRC parcel within the red boundaries is also called the Fishhook Parcel. To the north, in the royal blue, is the Grand Landings MPD, and those are SFR-1, Single Family Residential 1 lots typically that are close to this project. To the east, where it says AC in the lime green, that is agriculture conservation, and that's a county designation, as well as additional NRC properties. To the south, there's a NRC property between the two gray areas that go out to Seminole Woods. That's the school district property, and I think it's 30 acres or approximately that goes between this project. And then across the street, in, we have properties in yellow that are gold that are SFR-3, and then in the orange are SFR-2 properties. The, to the west, there's additional PUD, and then just to the west of that, where we see like a question mark in black, that's the Integra Woods Community that's shown as MFR-2. Additionally, there's properties to the south and west of that that are zone MFR-2. Directly at the corner of Seminole Woods Boulevard and US-1 on the north side is High Intensity Commercial, which is shown in the deep red, which is, we also call COM-3. So as proposed by the applicant, they're proposing 67 acres to PRS. That stands for preservation. That's shown in the evergreen. It's a little bit more difficult to see. And then in the tan, there's 256 acres proposed for SFR-1. And then in the dark brown, adjacent to Seminole Woods Boulevard on the north side, there's 52 acres proposed to multifamily residential 2, for a total of 375 acres. A little background on this, JTL Grand Landings Development LLC purchased the 45-acre Fishhook Parcel in 2014, and later it was annexed into the city. They want to rezone that to Single Family Residential 1. Burn Dog PCP LLC purchased the remaining 330 acres August 2022, and then a year later it was annexed into the city. Burn Dog wants to rezone their land to SFR-1, MFR-2, and PRS. The entire 375 acres would have a residential cap of 850 homes, but since this was, I believe, 416, this cap would carry over to this new project. Okay, these are the five review criteria from Section 2.0505 of the Land Development Code that we look at on each rezoning. A, it must not be in conflict with the public interest. B, it needs to be consistent with both the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code. C, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. D, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. And E, it needs to comply with all applicable government standards. That would include local, state, and federal. So in our staff report, we provided detailed findings of these five criteria. In staff's professional opinion, the petition will not create a nuisance, hazard, or any compatibility issues as the proposed uses will be compatible with single-family homes across Seminole Woods Boulevard. Due to this, Seminole Woods Boulevard being a major collector roadway, it's currently 80-foot wide right of way. There's a 40-foot drainage easement located on the north side of Seminole Woods Boulevard, and the city requires a 25-foot landscape buffer G just after that on the, would be the very south side of the property. This rezoning, in staff's opinion, supports four goals, policies, or objectives of the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board determined the Cascades rezoning application number 5107 to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to City Council to rezone 375 acres from the PUD and NRC zoning districts to the SFR-1, MFR-2, and PRS zoning districts. And the applicant's agent is present and does have a PowerPoint presentation.
Have any questions for staff before the applicant presents?
I don't have any questions for staff at the moment.
Councilman?
Given the limitations that the council placed on the property, if you want to bring up the zoning map? I'm not sure our presentation is pertinent to the issue. So I guess the question is, is how do we proceed? Is there a mechanism in which we can finalize this development? We'll go back to the drawing board and give us some assurances that, so I guess what would make sense to me is to agree and to amend the zoning application to just place single-family residential on the entire property. And then we would come back and deal with phases into the future.
So you'd be willing to eliminate the multifamily?
The request for multifamily and convert those on the floor to single-family, you know, downzone. I believe that's applicable.
And would they be at the same standards listed in the chart that's currently in the materials? So I think it's, I don't think there's anything, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, I don't think there's anything that's an exception to what our current code and technical--
It would only be SFR-1.
Straight.
Okay, it's straight.
Straight zoning.
Okay, so as long as that's the understanding.
SFR-1, right.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Hyder?
No questions.
Okay. All right, hold on. Do you want to clarify that for us?
Yes. Can you clarify the action that you're requesting, Mr. Chmento?
So I believe in order to get this finished and move on to the future, that we could, we would, on the floor, amend the zoning request so that, on the zoning map? Can you bring up the zoning map?
So you're gonna change those designations on the zoning map to the single-family designation?
Yeah, so red would turn to yellow.
Right.
SFR-1.
Has everybody understood?
So you would delete the request for the multifamily MFR-2--
Correct.
--designation and instead have the single-family residential 1 designation on all planned residential areas, and then the PRS zoning designation still in the, on the conservation lands?
Let me make sure that I'm looking at the right thing.
Just give us a second.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Where's this presentation that you have up there?
So, thank you for your patience on that. So, I believe that we can resolve this and be done with it if the applicant changes the brown, identified as MFR-2, to SFR-1.
So, let everybody know what that is, that's single-family residential.
Right, and that would all be...
All of the brown.
So, the entire project would be SFR-1 and a preservation.
Right, that answers your question, I think, very clearly, okay. Very good.
So, we're...
Understood. Questions from city council members to the applicant?
Public comment, I'll make a motion.
There is...
No, there's going to be...
Oh, is there public comment?
Yeah, we have to have public...
Yeah, we have, we're going out, so...
Then I'll make the motion.
If there's not another question from city council members, I will, I will open this up to the public, hoping that you each understand what was just described. Yes, sir?
Mayor, one bit of formality, staff, are you in agreement with the applicant's request to change the zoning as he...
Yes, it's still...
To take away the multifamily?
It still would be consistent with the comp plan.
Okay.
Residential, and we're in agreement, staff.
Good, sir, go ahead.
Once again, Daniel Seaman, Seminole Woods, I'm hoping that I speak for the residents because it got dropped to the 416, that, at least for me, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to address you, but I'm trying to make this go a little quicker.
Understand, good.
I'm hoping that we're in agreeance that the 416 for the single-family homes, we should ask them to go ahead and vote, and nobody else come up here and walk. Everybody...
I would like to say...
All right, sir, sir, sir. Okay, all right. Tell me what you want to tell me, and let's get through it.
Okay, look, the bottom line is, first of all, thank you, you made the right decision. And while 416 homes is not the ideal, it is much, much better than what was being proposed.
Thank you.
So, I know that you got your arm twisted quite a bit tonight, so I just want to say...
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
So, I attended the meeting last night with Mr. Schmento, and I just wanted to say thank you to him and to Mr. Douglas for switching that to single-family, to thank you guys for what you did as well. You guys listened to the residents. In the future, I hope we can do this a whole lot sooner than many, many hours of showing up and having to go this route, but you guys did an amazing job with the vote, and very much thank you to Mr. Douglas and to Mr. Schmento.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I just want to say thank you, thank you. You have been so flexible, he was wonderful last night, even though we twisted his arm, but I'm still need the extra buffer.
All right, ma'am, ma'am.
I still need the extra buffer, so we can see the trees, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you so much. There's hope in government, thank you, thank you.
What?
Just to echo everyone else, thank you, Mr. Schmenti and Mr. Douglas and all them, and thank you for the counsel.
Thank you for your comment.
Very appreciate it.
Hi, I'm DeRobles. I just want to thank all of you, because this is going to help our community, because we need to move like he said. I mean, we don't want to be mulberry, but we need to grow and grow the right way, and make sure that we have everything there in order to help everyone, including yourselves for the city. And I just want to thank all of you, you too, everybody, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to thank all of you, and also I just want to ask, will there be a national vegetation buffer?
Ma'am, ma'am...
I apologize, I'm just asking because he knows.
I'll get you the answer.
I think our main concern would only be the natural vegetation buffer between us and the development, only because, like I said, it's 80 feet from my home.
And I believe that was addressed earlier...
It was, I was outside the room, but I thank you for your time, thank you, Mr. Schmenti, and I'd like to thank Mr. Douglas as well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any last comments? Yes, sir?
Alex Vermonenko, Seminole Woods, mayor, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, one thing I want to mention, so, I mean, everybody's very complimentary, right, saying, thank you, that's great. One thing I want to mention is 416 units is still 416 units, which means that that is still strain on the infrastructure and all of those things that we discussed. So, while we're still very clear that we are going to be growing, there was going to, there was a lot of things that were brought up today, saying that the city as is today is not ready, or, I mean, there's issues such as roads, schools, healthcare, and all the other things that are not to the standard, even with the people that we have today. So, I want to mention that as this moves forward, 416 units, we need to concentrate on the issues to be able to, for the city to accommodate this growth, right? And we need to be very, very responsible how we do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any last comments? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say thank you to the council, and thank you, you restored my faith in our city government, and that you heard the people, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Any other speakers? Seeing no other speakers at this time, I will close the public comment, I'll come back to the dais. Any final comments from city council members that I would ask for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from...
Council, Councilmember Danko, can you just make the motion to approve the request of the applicant?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the request of the applicant.
As amended?
As amended to single-family homes.
To single-family residential and PRS.
And what?
PRS, the preservation.
Yes, PRS, yes.
Thank you.
So, the motion is made, may I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri, is there any additional discussion by city council?
None.
I'll stay with the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Heider?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes forward.
We now move to item number H-13. Thank you. And counsel, if you'd go ahead and read that in.
Sure, this is item number 13, An Ordinance Regarding the Rezoning Application Number 5276, Fifth Amendment to the Palm Coast Park MPD, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida Providing for the Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development MPD, Allowing Residential Uses in Tracks Previously Designated for Non-Residential Uses, Converting Some Office and Commercial Entitlements to Allow Additional Industrial Uses, and an Additional 750 Residential Units, Allowing Permitted Uses to Be Relocated to Other Tracks Within the MPD, Clarifying Standards for Park Land Dedications and Park Impact Fees, Allowing the City the Option of Having the Declarant Provide the Right-of-Way for Future Roadway Connecting Beltar Parkway to US-1, Providing for Legislative Findings and Intent, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date. Oh, I'm sorry, city council, this is a quasi-judicial matter.
Vice Mayor? Have you had any ex parte?
On this matter, no, I do not believe I have.
Counselor Woman Pontieri?
No.
I have not?
I have not.
City council has not had any ex parte communication?
Thank you. City clerk, if there's, if you could please swear in, anybody that'll be speaking on today's application?
If you'll be testifying in this item, please rise and raise your right hand to swear or affirm the oath. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, may be seated.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. This was heard at the June 6 city council meeting, that first read was approved, but council had some voiced some concerns, and so there has been some changes to this, and Mr. Hoover, senior planner, will go through those changes.
Thank you.
Palm Coast Park MPD is 4,579 acres, and it's located along both sides of US-1. In the picture here, the north arrow is to the upper left-hand side of the screen, and the project extends from Old Kings Road all the way down to the north property boundary of the Hargrove Grade Industrial Park. And this MPD provides the zoning for the Palm Coast Park DRI that was originally approved in 2004. So, this MPD uses map is probably the most important thing we're looking at here, and the areas in yellow are residential low density, orange residential medium density, and then it goes up to brown for residential high density. The pink are mixed uses, the green are public tracks, and the purple is industrial. So, the key changes with this fifth amendment to the MPD includes tracks 5A through 5E may also be used for light industrial uses, or IND-1, and this would be under specific standards we created for development in the MPD agreement. Track 15 gets changed from flex uses to residential low density, and then track 21 gets split into 21A and 21B, and the purpose of that is the portion along Beltar Boulevard is closer to residential, so the applicant split that off, so that the uses on that are a little bit lower intensity than the uses behind the soccer fields. So, the key changes to the Master Plan Development Agreement on tracks 21A and 21B, it would also allow MPD uses of residential high density, it would change DRI uses to mixed uses, and it would update various land develop, land development code zoning categories that would be allowed. The maximum height is being reduced on track 21A from 80 feet to 50 feet, and we created specific light industrial development standards. At the first reading on May 16, the city council approved the ninth DRI amendment, and there's only one hearing on that, so that was, is completely done, and the fifth amended Palm Coast Park MPD agreement was approved. At the second reading on June 6, the city council asked the applicant to get back to staff to look at two key concerns, one was having residential uses on track 17, and the second one was a lack of tracks that allowed light industrial uses along US-1. So, the applicant and staff have probably met on this a half dozen times, and the latest version shows that the applicant has eliminated all residential uses on track 17, and then they've added light industrial uses on four tracks on the east side of US-1, and those include tracks 13A at the south end, going up to 13B, 13C, and then it goes up to track 4. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommended that city council approve the proposed fifth amendment to the Palm Coast Park MPD Development Agreement. And Mr. Schmentos here, if you have any questions for the applicant?
Council members, Vice Mayor, any questions?
I have, I have no questions.
Counselor Woman Pontieri?
Do we have a net number with regards to, well, first of all, let me say this, thank you to both staff and the applicant for the work that you've done to really encourage this true usage of an MPD, and ensuring that we can increase industrial, increase retail, increase commercial, without allowing residential to be approved only and not industrial. I greatly appreciate, I think it's in the best interest of the city, so thank you for that. My question is, do we have numbers on the net, kind of the net numbers? So, we have a certain amount of acreage, I think it's near 7,000, what we designated or what we've changed to just industrial versus what it was before, just in my head, because there's a lot of numbers here, there's a lot of land, do we know what those net numbers are?
On the one track map, it shows that there's one track, which is 19, I do not know the size, perhaps Mr. Papa might have an estimate. The other, the other tracks are typically mixed uses. However, I think the trump card that the council has on that is that there's a lot of industrial entitlements that have already been sold out there, and so in this DRI and the CDD, if you purchased 100,000 square feet of light industrial entitlements and you don't build those, you get to pay for infrastructure equivalent to that amount. And so, I think there's a real encouragement there that that light industrial is going to happen, so in an indirect manner, I guess you would say.
So, and I appreciate that. With regards to the entitlements, Walker Douglas was kind enough to send to the city the list of entitlements that we currently have for the MPD, and I saw that on tracks 5A through 5E, there are no industrial entitlements, there were 644 residential ones. Am I correct, though, that industrial entitlements can still be purchased for these tracks so that industrial can be developed on them?
Michael Schmento for the applicant, that is correct. This rezoning added industrial use to those five, to those tracks identified as five, so in the event a user came in, we could do that.
And nothing has been predetermined on these tracks so far, correct?
No, not at all, no, these are owned by third parties.
Okay, and then I have the same question, and I appreciate that, I have the same questions for tracks 11B, 12, there are several of these tracks that have no entitlements whatsoever, I think the note on the entitlement listing said that entitlements could not be found. So, do we know of whether or not there's been any dedication for any of those tracks at all, or this is pretty much a clean slate, and entitlements can be purchased in the industrial?
That is correct. Well, so long as industrial is a permitted use, for example, on 12, 11B, right, that in the zoning, that does not allow for industrial, so...
Right.
They could not purchase it. So, if there are uses assigned to a track, they can purchase entitlements consistent with that track.
There was one more question I had, sorry. Track 21, it said had 75,000 institutional entitlements.
Correct.
Will that affect what we've got listed here is as 21A and 21B?
No.
Okay. All right, I didn't have any other questions, thank you, thank you, Mr. Schmento.
Counselor Woman Heider, any questions? I have no questions. Anyone else? All right, then I will open this item up to the public, does anybody in the public have a comment to make on this item?
Daniel Seaman again, just a question, I think, probably for the applicant, because it's open entitlement for these areas, is there going to be some consideration, I guess it's for the applicant and for the city, or maybe permitting, on where this light industrial is going to be? For example, are they going, is there going to be the effort to promote businesses instead of, say, warehouses or storage units, because storage units kind of...
So, that's really outside of the decision-making today. In other words, I do understand the question, but that's not part of the decision-making today, that would be more of a, let's call it an economic development question, which you could pose to the city directly, and I think it would be more appropriate there.
Okay, thank you.
How does that impact the environment in that area?
Ma'am, please state your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm DeRobles, 27 Albright. How does that impact the environment in that area? That's all I ask.
How does it impact, so staff, can you, can you refer to your comp plan?
Yeah, yeah, just real brief, not only the comp plan, but the DRI process itself, Development Regional Impact, which was approved in 2004, that had, not only the City of Palm Coast... That had not only the city of Palm Coast looking at the environmental resources, but you also had the St. John's River Water Management District, Florida Wildlife Services. We looked at archaeological resources as well. So a lot of the land that you see here was not just the city of Palm Coast, but it was a joint venture with other agencies, environmental agencies. So for example, Hewlett, Hewlett Branch, you have a lot of conservation lands that's not really depicted there. That's on the west side of US-1. You also have a significant amount of conservation lands on the east side as well. So a lot of that has been taken care of early, early in the process.
So Mr. Tyner, all of the environmental impact has been approved by all of the correct agencies in advance of this plan?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, just another really neat thing that happened with Florida Fish and Wildlife is that the applicant, when they were developing this, they dedicated a lot of land to the north for gopher tortoise habitat. So any gopher tortoises that are found here, they can go, go to that area for habitat to relocate them there.
Okay. I was just curious, because you said 2004 and we're 2023. I didn't know, like, like if you revisited again to what's-
We actually do, you know, not only these conservation practices in place, but also during the site plan process, we also look at it, make sure threatened and dangerous species aren't there during that process as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Nope? Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'll close public comment. I'll come back to the dais. Are there any final questions or comments?
I have none.
Does that, have your questions been answered, Councilwoman?
I just have a couple more, I apologize. And I did want to address the gentleman who asked about some of the industrial. There are certain development standards that I saw in here that I think staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, took into account that this will be a mixed use kind of MPD. So we've altered, like, put a, I saw there were restrictions on RV boat storage, things like that. Is that correct?
Bill?
On the- Right, there's, I believe there's only one place-
That's true. Yeah, Mike is-
I think the gentleman was asking what was going to be promoted to put there.
No, I understand that, Mayor, but my point is that I think that staff paid close attention to, because we wanted to make sure that we increased the ability for commercial, that we still made it compatible with the fact that this will be likely budding up to some residential as well in some places.
That's right. And then, and then we also put like some industrial standards, like on track five, as you recall, that was already part of this. And then we required a very large buffer along the roadway. So you had like a, you know, 90% opacity to keep that compatible as well.
Yeah, and I just wanted, I wanted them to be able to point that out. So I thank you for that. The only other, I had one other question. The, on page 218, it references residential low density would be up to six units per acre, residential medium density up to 10, and residential high density up to 20 units per acre. Are all these compliant with the LDC? Were there any exceptions or, because I don't remember the LDC offhand, the whole thing, but are all these, are any of these outside of what we would regularly approve?
This, this was a DRI.
Yeah.
Is a, is a DRI. And that set forth years and years ago, the densities and densities for the DRI.
So I just want to make sure that there was no change there.
Yeah, no, it's, there's, it's still compliant and reflective of what's permitted in the DRI.
Okay. And then my last question is, there's a reference to a revised Exhibit H captioned land uses and development of the ninth amended DRI, and that wasn't attached. I just wanted to know what that was. It's referenced on page 26 of, or 229 of the packet.
Yeah, the map H is attached to the DRI. It lays out the land uses and, and all the different areas of the DRI.
Okay. I just want to make sure that doesn't conflict with the chart that we just looked at.
I mean, I, I didn't look at it myself.
Right.
But the DRI amendment that was done to facilitate the MPD amendment, already passed, so they, they should be consistent with one another.
We'll, we'll double check.
Just make sure, please, staff, that there's no inconsistencies between that chart and this exhibit.
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Any questions? Very good. So if there's no other comment or question from city council, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
Vice, so please, you gotta be, you gotta make the motion.
All right. Exactly what language-
Make the motion to approve.
Well, I make the motion to approve. Is there any legal jargon I'm missing there?
Yes. Yes.
Just read the ordinance.
Yeah, a motion to approve ordinance regarding-
You could refer to the agenda item if you want to.
Yes, I'll make, and I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance to amend the Palm Coast Park master plan.
There you go.
There you go.
That'll do it. Okay, we have, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any further discussion? Let's roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko. Councilmember Hyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Yes.
Mayor Alvin.
Yes.
The motion passes 4 to 0.
We now move to item I, which would be ordinances of the first read. And councillor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Of course, Mayor. This is an ordinance regarding amendment to the door-to-door solicitation ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 35, nuances, offenses, and miscellaneous provisions. Article 3, Solicitation, Division 2, Peddlers and Hawkers, Section 35-163, License Required, Application Issuance Term. Section 35-169, License Suspension, and Section 35-170, License Revocation, and Section 35-171, Penalties of the Code of Ordinances of the City, Penalties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, to provide for a revised application and review process to obtain and hold a solicitation license, providing for severability, codification, conflicts, and an effective date. City Council, this item was workshopped for you, and there were a couple things that came out of that workshop that you wanted to see changed or had questions on. The first item, if you look at page 268, or subsection H of Section 35-163, you asked that the identification badge be required to be worn by the licensee, licensee at all times while soliciting and should be visible to residents. That was added in as requested. The other question that came up was, as you know, what we've done here is modified our door-to-door solicitation ordinance to match the state's licensing procedure. We've basically taken what they did and we, we put it into ours with some changes. We require a badge and some other administrative items. One of the reasons for denial of one of these licenses is if the person who was applying to be a door-to-door solicitor has been convicted of a crime of moral turpitude. You asked what that is. There is no statutory definition. However, there is a lot of case law that explain or have decided what crimes of moral turpitude is. So some of those crimes, some of those cases, I'm not going to list all the crimes that have been designated as moral turpitude, because I don't have a list anywhere. This is just kind of a collection from doing research. There are items such as, you know, monetary crimes, embezzlement, extortion, mail fraud, possession of counterfeit money. It also includes manslaughter or murder, indecent exposure, auto theft, the sale of illegal drugs for non-medical use. And that's just a four of the, that's just a few of the-
Are sex crimes included in that?
I, since, since there's been a-
I would think so.
Since there's been a case that says indecent exposure is a crime of moral turpitude, I would assume that yes, it would be considered one also.
The, the badge is a photo ID?
Yes, it will be a photo ID. Mm-hmm.
Questions? I think Councilwoman Pontieri, I think that addressed the, what you had brought up at the workshop.
It did, yeah. My two concerns were the crimes that we include and then also displaying the badge when the solicitors go door-to-door. So thank you to our attorney and to staff for working on this, and I think we have a good-
And aligning with the state is a good thing, too. So we've got all that case logged. Any comments, Councilwoman?
Just a quick question. Are there any hours that are set forth so that they can only do solicitation within a certain timeframe?
It says between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's there. Okay, any other questions?
That's it.
That's it. All right, then I would open up this item for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Any final comments from city council?
I'll make the motion to amend this item.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
To approve, we already amended.
Don't amend.
To approve, just read it, to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve amending Chapter 35 concerning our door-to-door solicitation licenses.
Very good, well done. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri.
You're throwing off my time.
I know.
Normally, I make the motion, and then you just ask for the second.
I've been trying all night to get going on that.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Clerk have the count, thank you. Councillor, if you would go to J15, a resolution, please.
Yes, this is a resolution regarding easement vacation for Spring Lake Asset LLC. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving application number 5513 for the partial vacation of one approximately 50-foot utility easement for property located within Revere at Palm Coast Phase 1 as platted in Revere at Palm Coast, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 38, of the public records of Flagler County, Florida. Specifically parcel numbers 41130, 5160, 00000, 1390, 41130, 5160, 00000, 11340, 41130, 5160, 00000, 01010, 0080, 41130, 5160, 00000, 1320, 41130, 5160, 00000, 1310, 41130, 5160, 00000, 00P0, 41130, 5160, 00000, 00H0, 41130, 5160, 00000, 00U0, and 41130, 5160, 00000, 00A0. Located in Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, providing for recording, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, councillor. Staff, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this really is a cleanup item. You know, when there's a plan and you have an easement, and then the real plan comes in, you don't need the easement anymore, then you vacate it. So Virginia Smith will have a very short presentation to describe the action.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. With me today is Dennis Sleep and Ray Tyner, of course. And we have a vacation of easement that was requested by the property owner and the developer, and it is located here, which is north of Palm Coast Parkway and Hargrove Grade, and more particularly located within the Reverie Development at Palm Coast Phase 1. It is a 50-foot utility easement that was directly within the development. And both the utility and FBNL requests were okay with it being partially vacated. There was a new easement that was located and provided for the city's access to well sites in that area. The application 5513 for the partial vacation of one 50-foot utility easement, as I said, was agreed upon by both FPL and the city utility easement. The new easement that we did receive during the development was already recorded for the access to the well sites, so this is just a cleanup item, as Mr. Tyner has brought up. And we just, moving right along, we recommend approval of this application, 5513, for the partial vacation of one approximately 50-foot utility easement for the property located within the Reverie at Palm Coast Phase 1, as platted in Reverie at Palm Coast, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 3.
Thank you, Virginia. Are there questions from city council members on this item? Straightforward, right? Questions? We have no questions. I will open up the item for public comment. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this item at this time, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Come back to the dais. Any final discussion?
I'm going to let Teresa make this motion.
Then I would, I would, I would ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution approving application number 511, 5513 for the partial vacation of the 50-foot easement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to Resolution Number 16, I believe.
That's correct, correct, Mayor. This is the Resolution Concerning the Whiteview Village Phase 2 Final Platt. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving application number 5096 for the final plat of a parcel of land being a replat of track J, Whiteview Village Phase 1, as recorded on the plat thereof in Plat Book 40, page 46 through 55 of the public records of Flagler County, Florida, all being a portion of Section 23, Township 11 South, Range 30 East, Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. City council members, this is a final plat approval. It is considered a quasi-judicial matter, so if you've had any ex parte communications regarding this request, please disclose them for the record now.
Vice Mayor?
I have-
Ex parte, Councilwoman Pontieri?
Oh, none, none.
I've had none. But the city council has had no ex parte.
Thank you. I'll also note that this is a final plat approval, so this is a ministerial action, meaning that the infrastructure for the development's already in, so your review is limited to that.
And Mr. Hoover has a brief presentation.
The Whiteview Village Phase 2, it's 20.78 acres, and it's located on the southwest side of Pine Lakes Parkway and west of White Mill Drive. And you can see some lots to the east. That was Phase 1. And it's basically a big mixed-use area between those three roadways, and it's part of the Whiteview MPD. And that was approved back in 2018. And the preliminary plat was approved and infrastructure construction commenced in January 2021. And the preliminary plat was done over both phases. And there's some construction photos out there. So what they're doing is adding 81 lots. It will make the total village community of the single-family homes for 202. And a performance bond for the remaining infrastructure is not very much. It, in the amount of $146,672.45, has been received and found acceptable. And staff recommends that city council adopt Resolution 2023-XX, approving the final plat for Whiteview Village Phase 2, and authorizing the mayor to execute the plat and staff to issue a final development order for application number 5096.
Questions from city council? Councilwoman Pontieri?
Have none.
Just for our friends in the media, this was previously approved for 210 lots. It looks like the final development will have 202. Is that accurate? Based on your present, based on the documents? Because, and here's why I ask. You said that they're adding 81, but they're not actually adding 81 to what was previously approved. It's a total of 210 that was approved, right?
Right. It's been, it's been 202 lots for this single-family area all along.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
No questions.
No questions. Then I would open this item up to the public. Does any member of the public want to make a comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment. Any additional discussion?
I'll make the motion.
So make the motion.
Make a motion to approve the final plat for Whiteview Village Phase 2.
Well done.
You're getting really good at that.
Is there-
I say so, you're doing good.
You're a real motion maker.
Now, next, next week, or two weeks from now, he'll just cut me off after I say I make the motion, and then he asks for a second, so.
Time is of the essence. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion by city council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?